And more cooperative approach with property owners? Or do we want to make a shift towards a more regulatory-based approach with penalties and fines that can help to motivate people to take quicker action? Okay, so just an overview of kind of what the challenges are that we see right now. We have a large caseload. There's a chunk of the cases that come in that are difficult and time-consuming to resolve. The code does not have strong teeth to help us with resolving those cases. And we have a need for additional regulatory tools to aid in that effort. And we've heard from the community throughout the residential code update and more recently about wanting more effective and timely resolution of code compliance cases. So with this code amendment that we've begun talking about with the Planning Commission, we're proposing to consolidate all the code compliance-related language in one code section, clarify the process, and set out, you know, a clear step-by-step process, simplify the regulations for readability, add definitions, and add some regulatory tools so that we've got what we need to be more effective. And we've got a schedule laid out for this amendment process right there on that first green dot tonight with our study session. As I said, we've already been to Planning Commission once previously, and I'll be talking with them again tomorrow to start digging into the policy options and getting some feedback and direction for them on a draft code that they'll begin to look at in May. They're planning to hold their public hearing on June 20th and provide recommendations to the council. It will come back here July 17th and August 7th. Okay, so now I'm going to dive into a little more about our code compliance program and how we're operating currently. As of last November, we hired a second half-time code compliance officer. That was one of the recommendations that came out of the residential code update process. And so now we've got two half-time code compliance officers. I supervise them, and then we also have some support from an administrative assistant. And we all work, you know, really collaboratively with other folks around the city, particularly inspectors and planners and other folks in development services and the city attorney's office.
Can I ask a clarifying question? First of all, it's really hard for me to read that chart, so I'm not looking away from you when I go to that.
Sorry.
Are you the .1 FTE then in the top green box?
That's me.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, so this is showing the cases opened in green and the cases closed per year in red. So looking back over the last 15-plus years, we can see that we've been averaging around 100, 150 cases opened per year for the last several years. And the number of cases closed has gone down a little bit in the recent years. I can say that Jimmy Surfling, our code compliance officer that's been with our department for over 10 years, she started in about 2006, 2007, and at that time, we were just going into the recession, and so the number of cases coming in went down quite a bit. And you could see that big spike up in cases closed. So in that time, you know, incoming cases were very slow. She was able to deal with a big backlog, close things out. But from there, the economy picked up, and we started seeing more and more cases coming in every year. And we've got a little bit behind on closing cases. And so there's kind of this delta here where we're closing less cases than we're opening each year. And because of that, we've got a backlog. So this is all of the cases that have remained open and are unresolved by year that they were opened. So there's a few, there's that little tail back there, a couple cases here and there from the out-years that were never closed. We believe that most of these are issues that have been resolved one way or the other, and we just haven't gone back to close it in our tracking system. Some of these, you know, it may have been completely resolved, it may have been moot because the house was torn down, or the person moved, or some other circumstance. And we just need to go back and clean up the database and get those cleared out.
Can you re-clarify? So is that cumulative? So does 2017 represent all the open, but these are just new, net new?
Yeah, the ones that have remained open, that were opened in the year where the bar is. So in 2013, there's 35 or so cases that have not yet been closed.
Okay, so this is all issues still open by year they were open?
Correct.
Okay.
Quick question. Is there a regulatory requirement to close these cases?
No.
So...
You know, with respect to the backlog that you show there, Allison, so how are the residents? I assume that if it's still open for an extended period of time, people must be calling you folks, asking for updates or...
Sometimes.
Sometimes. And how do you keep people informed? I mean, is it just a matter of waiting for them to call you to find out what's going on, or...
Yeah, I was going to get to this a little farther on, but it's okay. You know, we do our best to follow up with people as we're able, but we are very busy for the staff capacity we have, and it doesn't always happen in the best way, I would say. So we do get people calling to ask, you know, what's the status of this case? What's going on? And we follow up with them definitely when they inquire about it.
Dave?
Yeah, can I ask two questions? So just doing a little bit of quick math to clarify what Debbie was asking, if I just go back to 2013, it's like 245 open cases still?
Yeah, that makes sense.
Okay, that's crazy. And then the second thing is, what makes a case, this is really simplistic, what makes a case unresolved? Is it we haven't initiated the investigation? I know it's, or is it that, how does a case become unresolved?
You know, with all the cases shown here, there's a variety of different things going on, but what I'm trying to indicate here is that it hasn't been marked closed in our database. So, you know, we haven't had a closure in terms of we've either gone out to see that the issue was resolved, or they've notified us that it was resolved. And that could mean that they're still somewhere in the process of getting permits or making corrections or something on their property. It may mean that they're just ignoring us and not doing anything. It may mean that they've, you know, done the majority of the corrections, and there's one thing that they still need to do, or, like, I know there's one thing that Dana just told me about earlier today, is like somebody corrected something and never notified her, and then she just happened to see it and said, "Oh, I guess they fixed that. We better update it." So sometimes we just don't know.
Are there any, is an unresolved case also one that we haven't started on, or do we start on every case?
I'll get into the prioritization of how we do that, but I'd say for most of these, they've been started in some way, and like we've contacted the property owner and let them know there's a problem, and we're somewhere in that process of working through it.
I think there's one... Hold on, Tom. I think what we're going to do is I'll take one from Bruce, and then let's let Allison go ahead and go through.
Just quickly, so what does it take to open a case? What's enough to actually say, "Yeah, that's a case," rather than, "Oh, that's just us having a conversation"?
I mean, most things where someone contacts the city and says, you know, "My neighbor's doing X, Y, and Z. Is that a code violation? We'll open a case. We'll investigate." You know, we could find out the very same day, "Oh, there's nothing, you know, counter the code there. Just close it." Or we might find that there is a violation, and then we'll pursue it.
So Council, I'm going to encourage that we...
Thank you. Okay, you probably can't really read this, and that's okay. I wanted to give an example. A lot of people have asked me, "Well, you know, on average, how long does it take to resolve a case? Are there certain types of cases that take longer to resolve than others? Or, you know, is there different kinds of averages of time for certain categories?" Well, unfortunately, there's not a lot of good trends or patterns to see. Here, I just pulled out all the entries from our database where the case type was residential and the name included the word garbage. And you can see that there's a variety of things, nuisance and solid waste violations going back for several years. And some of them are resolved the same day they were entered, and some of them remained open for over 500 days. Some from a couple years ago are still open. It's a huge range, and there's not a clear pattern. And I would say that's the case with almost any category you could look at. So just to give you an example of that. Okay, so our current code compliance process is kind of broken into two components, two types of work. When we added the additional half-time person last fall, we also started doing a new type of work, which is construction monitoring. So this is really focused on looking at active construction sites and proactively monitoring for violations of the code or of our permit conditions. And Dana Zleitew, our new code compliance officer, came from the city of Issaquah, and she's got a lot of experience with stormwater and environmental issues. And so we've been able to really focus in on erosion control and stormwater issues and tree protection. And for the last five or six months since she's been here, I think we've added a lot of capacity with monitoring those issues during the rainy season. So that's fantastic. The big things, like I said, have been tree protection, stormwater, construction work or parking, and some enforcement of our new work hours and noise requirements. And then kind of the bread and butter of code compliance is the complaint-based compliance requests. So this is when a resident writes in or calls in with a complaint. We typically don't accept anonymous complaints, with the exception of something that's like a life safety issue. We investigate them based on priority, and I'll talk about what the priorities are in a minute. The top issues we see the most of are encroachments. That's when someone is building something within a neighboring property. These are particularly within the public right-of-way, so people building things along our public streets in the right-of-way. Nuisance and noise violations, building issues, like building without a permit, not building to code, tree issues, and then zoning and land use issues. So now I'll just talk a little bit more about that process of what happens once we receive the complaint. So folks can go online, and there's our form there, our code compliance request form. That's really the best way to submit a complaint. It gives us all the information we need to start investigating, and it gets emailed right over to the code compliance officers, and they can prioritize it and assign it and get to work. So once they get started, they'll make an initial property owner contact and do an investigation. And depending on what the issue is, that can really vary. Some issues are very simple. They may not even need an investigation, like say, we get a report that someone has been leaving their trashcans out in their driveway and not pulling them back after trash day. In that case, you know, maybe we'll drive by and check, or maybe we'll just send a letter that clarifies what the regulations are for moving your trashcan. You know, other things that are more complicated, we'll definitely go out, we'll contact the property owner and say, "Can we come on site and take a look at this?" And start to make contact with them and let them know what the violation is, if there is one, and what the regulations might require to bring them into compliance. So from there, we'll typically do a courtesy notice. There's an example there. It's just basically a letter saying, "We've received a complaint. Here's what it is. Please call us, and we can talk with you about whether a violation exists and what we can do about it." From there, if they don't voluntarily come into compliance at that point, we'll start going to notices, and we'll do a correction notice, potentially a second correction notice, and then finally a notice of violation. We don't typically give penalties or fees for vast majority of violations on the island. There's only been one exception that any of us know of in the last decade, which was when a tree was cut down on a construction site in a pretty egregious situation, and there was a large fine given to that property owner. So this is how we prioritize the cases. Life safety issues are number one, things with environmental impacts, number two, and then things that impact city property or city right-of-ways, and finally, private property issues. So probably the most complaints we receive are in that category four, things, everything from fences to trashcans to encroachments and all kinds of things. But they really have to deal with private property, and they're not a safety or an environmental concern. All right, I'm just going to go through a few examples. These are real cases from the last couple years here on Mercer Island, just to give you a little flavor of what things look like. So for life safety, I've got a picture of a dangerous building there. You can see that it's, the roof is literally collapsing and it's falling apart. And then the one on the lower right-hand corner was building without a permit, and we used a stop-work order on that property. They were adding on a huge section to the house with no permits. Here's some examples of environmental issues. The one on the top left, they're building a huge retaining wall and stairway system in a critical area with no permits. And the one on the lower right is an active construction site that has inadequate erosion control, and it's discharging into the lake. In that case, we actually had to report them to Department of Ecology because of the impacts to the lake. And here's a couple of right-of-way examples. A lot of these have to do with fences or paving or other things being placed in the right-of-way. The top one, the fence is just right at the sidewalk there, definitely in the right-of-way. You can see the hydrant is several feet back, and it's also causing visibility issues coming around the corner there. And then the bottom one, they've fenced off a city utility vault that's within easement, and the city needs access for maintaining that facility, and it's completely blocked. Okay, these are just a couple examples of private property things. Like I said, they're pretty wide-ranging. One is an occupied home with a garbage problem and hoarding issues going on. You can see there's a lot of stuff going on outside of the home there, I think probably also inside. The lower one is showing, this was a site with permits in for construction, and they excavated soil from an adjacent site and piled it up under these trees. Okay, so now I want to shift and talk a little bit about our code and what we see as the deficiencies with our code. First of all, it hasn't been updated in a long time. Most of the sections were written in the '70s or '80s and have not been changed. It's got pretty limited tools that don't fit all situations. Like, just as an example, the nuisance code, the only tool it provides as a consequence is a misdemeanor, which is a criminal charge. So if we wanted to, you know, really pursue an issue like a noise violation or a house with garbage, other than telling people to stop doing it, our only option is to charge them with a misdemeanor, which probably doesn't really fit the crime, so to speak. In addition, things are really inconsistent across the different code sections. Like I was saying, in the nuisance code, it uses misdemeanors. The tree code calls for triple damages plus remediation as a penalty. And in the development code, we have civil infractions, which are a noncriminal offense with penalties of $50 to $100 per day. So it's just a real wide range there, not that consistent. The other problem is that the penalty structure in the development code is pretty impractical. It would require us to issue an infraction on a daily basis to actually collect those fines, like, it's written so that the, it's considered like a new violation on each day that they're continuing to violate, but we'd have to go out and issue them a new ticket each of those days if we wanted to collect the $50 per day. So just from an operational standpoint, it's pretty impractical. It's been staff practice that we do not issue civil penalties, except for that one really egregious case that I mentioned with the tree. Previous city attorneys have felt that the code left the city vulnerable to appeals, and they did not really support issuing penalties that could be appealed and go to court over. And without any kind of civil penalties or fines, we don't have a mechanism to bring closure to cases that have unwilling property owners. So this is what we're proposing to do with the code amendment. Consolidate everything in one section, make it more clear, spell out a sequential process for how we should go through this whole code compliance process. Make sure we have some clear simplified language and defined terms. Right now, there's not any definitions in the code. And we'd like to add some, especially for things like repeat violators or chronic violators, so that we can start to look at how our penalties could relate to people that are causing continual problems.
Can I ask a clarifying question? Is it, are we referring to property owners or developers or both? Because when you say chronic or repeated, it kind of makes me think of, you know, property owners don't typically move from property to property to property.
Right. Yeah, I mean, it could be both, depending on the circumstances. I think you're correct that if a property owner had repeated violations, it might be something like a noise violation or other nuisance issue where it keeps happening over and over again, and they're not stopping. And what I would think of as more of a chronic violator might be a developer that keeps cutting down trees or having erosion control problems on site after site.
Okay, thanks.
And then the final thing is adding regulatory tools so that we've got a full spectrum of consequences and incentives that we can choose from when we're approaching these cases. This is a list of the potential tools that we'll be discussing with Planning Commission in terms of adding those regulatory tools. So expanding the use of civil infractions and civil violations to give us the option of using those in the appropriate circumstances. Go ahead.
I'm sorry. Allison, can you explain the difference then between civil infractions and civil violations?
So a civil infraction is similar to a traffic ticket. We literally write out a citation, and it has a fine associated with it. They have the ability to appeal it to the municipal court, and they can either contest or ask for mitigation, or just pay it. But it's, you know, a pretty low-level thing like a traffic ticket, whereas a civil violation could come with other penalties. So, and there's also a little difference in how you might use these. Like, an infraction might be more appropriate for a nuisance issue, whereas a civil violation might be more appropriate for a violation of the development code, like building without a permit or a tree thing, where we're issuing a notice of violation and then a penalty. And we could set those penalties at different levels depending on what the violation is, whether or not there's been repeat or chronic issues, et cetera. So, you know, we might want to look at, are there specific types of violations that we think deserve more serious consequences?
Tom, you had a clarifying question?
Back a few charts ago, you were talking about the case prioritization.
Uh huh.
Where do town center cases fall? Because I didn't see that listed. I saw private, I saw...
Yeah. I mean, most of those are private property, right? So they'd be in that same area.
So it goes into private category four. And then just to clarify the complaint, the aviara from, that I put in two years ago, the only way that the city would be able to collect the $100 a day fine for that, which would be about $7,000 now, would be if you physically went there and issued a citation to the property manager every single day over the last two years.
That's my understanding. Or perhaps we can mail it, certified mail, but we'd have to be issuing it daily.
And then the third clarification, this is a follow-up to Dave's question, is, isn't there another way to close the case, or that a case lingers? And that's that if the property owner doesn't accept the city's proposed solution, or the city doesn't accept the landowner's proposed solution, so it just isn't sort of a debate like the aviara for a long time?
I mean, the aviara one is going through a design review process, so I would say that is working towards a conclusion. There's other cases where the property owner will completely contest that a violation exists. Like, we'll say, "You did X, and that's a violation." And they'll say, "No, that is not a violation. I interpret the code different than you, and I'm not going to change anything."
Okay, so the distinction there is the aviara's talking to the city, whereas some people wouldn't talk to the city.
Right, and they are working forward and making progress, and we believe they'll come into compliance this year.
So more slides, or...
I've got a couple more.
Okay.
Okay, so coming back to this one, we want to think about, how tough do we want to be, and where do we want to fall on that range of the more voluntary approach or the more punitive approach? And I've got a series of questions. I think I've mentioned some of these, but thinking, and I don't think we need specific feedback from the council on each of these questions tonight, but what I am looking for is to kind of bookend this discussion for the Planning Commission so that they have an understanding of what the council is looking for with the code amendment. And, you know, the overriding question of how tough do we want to be is an important one. You know, where on that scale do we want to fall? And then these were just intended to give you some more specific ideas and issues to consider. So, you know, how far do we want to go with penalties and fines, and how big should those be? What do we want to do about the repeat and chronic violators? Should some types of violations have harsher consequences? And then alternatively, what do we want to do about low-risk and very minimal, de minimis violations? Are there some things that are such small ball kind of stuff that maybe, you know, we want to be like the police detectives that say we don't have the resources to investigate that? What do we want to do about frivolous or excessive complaints? I know I've heard some concerns that certain residents may use the complaint process to sort of harass a neighbor. And then how should we, oh, I already mentioned that. Okay, that's it. So I'll open it up for questions, for discussion. I'd love to get feedback and guidance around these questions.
Mayor? If I could just add, I think it's important to note that generally speaking, when we're managing these cases with our residents, they really are complying. I mean, they're volunteer, they often don't know they've made a violation, and so I think when you're looking at these questions, you should keep that in mind. This is really for the cases that are very difficult to close, and not, you know, not to take a hammer to everything. It's kind of, don't interpret our questions to go in that direction. It really is for, and oftentimes, I often think of the neighbor who has to live next to the violation for potential years. It's really kind of unfair to them. But I think that's really, in setting this up, Allison was looking for what type of approach. I would recommend, in some cases, we bring back kind of, you know, what would, I would probably work in defining a little bit more super-low priority, medium priority, high priority, and I'd love to come back and get your consent on some of that. And then I think just generally speaking, you know, we are looking, are you, would you be agreeable, I think, to making at least some of those code cleanup, those really, I think, really sensible recommendations to clean up and clarify and make the code more clear and concise? And then I do think this question of, how do you want to approach it? I know I've worked in past cities where it tends to be kind of, it's a three-strikes-you're-out kind of approach, where you've been issued the notice, you have a certain period of time to come into compliance, you don't, you get another notice, you have another period of time to come into compliance, and then the third time, it's more, it's, at that point, it's much more serious. So you could, it really comes down to, really, how do you want to structure it? And again, I would structure it so that some of the more serious approaches are for the more serious violations.
Okay. So Council, why don't we start, if there's clarifying questions, et cetera, but then I think, you know, we have to figure out how to work our way through this list in terms of providing staff, and then ultimately, of course, the Planning Commission, the direction that they require. So I would say, let's go ahead and just get out any questions that we might have for Allison at this point in terms of the content she's presented or more. Benson?
First of all, thanks for the agenda bill. Actually, it was, as I was reading it, I was actually, when I was reading it, I was writing down questions, and then sure enough, most of those questions were answered later on in the agenda bill. The question I, well, number one, I definitely support cleaning up the code language, consolidating, and just making it easier to read and easier for people to actually find where the enforcement provisions are. I have difficulty, when you ask the question, "How tough should we be?", because I have no idea. I mean, we're in a vacuum. Obviously, it sounds like strictly voluntary compliance is probably not the way to go, and that there does need to be some teeth. I have no idea what kind of teeth we should be looking at without having some guidance from you folks. And so all I can say in general, I think we definitely need to have some, some, some fines. I have no idea. fines. I have no idea what those dollar amounts might look like. I just have to defer back to you folks, but I definitely think that if you're looking for teeth, I think, as I read what's happening, I think you definitely need to have some ability to find people to encourage expedited behavior if they're not correcting a problem.
Julie, did you want to comment? And then Dave, and then I think Wendy?
I think that's a good point from Councilmember Wong, that really, you think our question tonight is really seeking your guidance on whether or not you would be agreeable for us to bring back some of those alternatives and have you examine those. I think you need to examine them probably in relation to what are some of the more severe cases that are not being resolved, right? You really need to understand what's, and that's how I would approach it, is coming back and giving you some alternatives to examine how far to go. Again, I wouldn't, let me just be clear here, I don't think we are talking about going out and being very heavy-handed. I think we're just saying, let's provide our code enforcement officers with a little more tools to handle the very severe and difficult cases. So, if you're agreeable to giving us some more tools, we would come back with some of those proposals, probably looking at some other cities and how they, how, because again, we haven't updated this in a long, long time, looking at how other cities do it. But I think it's just, I have worked with some city councils where they are just absolutely prefer no, you know, bend over backwards, don't have any accountability for the property owner to, you know, so it just comes down to, where's your feeling on this? Are you kind of in the middle of the road? And it really does depend on the violation and that sort of thing. So, I think it's just trying to get a sense for what you are comfortable with.
Great. Thanks. So, I think we have Dave, Wendy, and then Celine.
So, thanks, Allison. Great presentation, because you made a super complicated topic really easy to understand. So, thank you for that. It feels like you're trying to solve for three things. One is code cleanup. I think that makes tons of sense. Give you all some tools with which to then apply that cleaned-up code in a way that allows you to enforce more effectively. And the third one, one of your slides that really struck me is you gave a, one, I'm sure it's a portion of a much larger list, of the laundry list of items. What strikes me is, it looks terribly manual, I'm guessing, to go through that. And it's looking at just that one sheet, it's garbage cans in the right-of-way, garbage cans in the right-of-way, garbage cans in the right-of-way. And I wonder, you know, I think what you all are trying to do is say, give us, give us the tools to make the greatest level of enforcement possible, given the limited resources that we have, even though we have a new half-time enforcement officer. It feels like that manualness of some of those low-level compliance issues are probably taking away from your ability to enforce real issues. So, is there not a, are there not tools available, like some kind of automation tools that allow the ingestion of a complaint and sort of, well, now it's been prioritized, we can issue either the letter automatically and then, and then give the person a chance to respond or then begin to issue fines automatically? Is there something like that that might be useful to you all?
I think there might be, and that's something that we're looking at. I think there's tools that could help us with our internal efficiency, like you're describing, and potentially also with how we communicate with the folks that make the complaint and follow up with them. Having some status information available on a website or using a CRM, constituent relationship management system to kind of track how we're communicating with folks. These are all things that are definitely possible. We just haven't done it so far, and we're just starting to look at, you know, how we could implement something like that in the city. Kirsten and I have been looking at a CRM program, and I think there could be applications for this. I think we could expand the way our online permit tracking tool works to add in code compliance. So, I think there's options. It's just, we need some time to explore those and develop it.
Yeah. I would be super interested in hearing what those options would be, and then your recommendations on where to go with the code changes, rather than putting us in the position of designing intersections again, like we love to do. That's great. Thank you very much.
We are looking actually at a mobile app called See Click Fix, which allows any resident to take a picture, violation, select what they believe it is, garbage, and it just comes into the city and then we would triage that. So, that is something we're looking at, purchasing and getting up and running very soon. I did it back in 2012 in Shoreline. It's a great, great tool.
Great. Okay. So, we have Wendy and then Celine.
Great. So, I want to thank you for this as well, and I like the idea of consolidating all of these different codes into one code so that it's very clear and very consistent. I would also ask that we look at what other cities have done. We can't be the first city to be looking at this. So, I'd love to do away with the frivolous, repeat, time-consuming ones that don't actually have the high impact that some of the erosion and development issues do. So, I would focus on the higher-impact, high-return, chasing down of infractions and sort of figure out a way to sort of let some of the nuisance things go or adopt a system like Dave is talking about where it's automatic and not so much staff time.
Great. We already are. We're tracking other cities and researching their codes and talking with their staff. So, that's, that's happening.
Super. Okay. Celine? And then I'm going to, Bruce, did you want to...
So, you talked about some of the measures that you'd like to see in place, but I didn't see something that mandated action. So, you asked about thresholds and you said if something was maybe below something, we, from a resource perspective, couldn't deal with it. But would you like some tools in the toolbox that say you have to act? And regardless of, you know, the baseline for having a complaint should be having a complainant. There should be somebody complaining.
Right.
Get anonymous in a very, very few set of circumstances, but there should be somebody's name on the complaint.
Right. We currently don't accept anonymous complaints, so...
Okay. So, that's different than what I heard.
Mayor, if I may, just because something just came up, that Deputy Mayor Niesed, from the legal perspective, we would not recommend anything that would force the city to act on a code enforcement basis, just because that could create a liability. Whenever you require us to correct something and we don't do it, that is a potential liability for the city. If we don't have the manpower or if we just, you know, don't do it right or fail to get compliance. So, from that perspective, I just wanted to let you know where the legal department felt on that. Thank you.
Good input. Thank you, so we don't walk ourselves into a corner.
Okay. So, maybe in that same vein, let's think about an ecological issue. If there was an infraction, a code-compliance issue that was ecological in nature, wouldn't we want to act? Could we really be put in a position where it's landowner says this, city says this, nobody does anything, and then eventually it escalates?
I mean, we typically use our stronger tools, the ones that we have currently, when we see a, you know, dangerous or severe ecological issue happening. We'll use a stop-work order or something akin to that to, you know, if it's a, if it's a construction site, stop what you're doing and fix it. Or, you know, for landslides, we'll not allow people to live in the house if, we'll red-tag their house if it's dangerous. Things like that can compel a situation to be addressed pretty rapidly. And, you know, I think if we receive complaints of any kind of serious nature, we're going to investigate it.
But if you had, for example, an ecological event that didn't have a complainant, but it was in a city property or right-of-way or critical area, you would just take action, right?
I mean, assuming...
Assuming you knew about it.
We knew about it and we had the resources to address it.
Okay. In terms of just the asks, the questions that you want answered, I would really like to see that you had some tools that were low effort from a staff perspective, you know, some civil penalties that you can issue, that don't require you to issue every day, and that those number of closed cases could be maybe flushed out in a one-time... You know, I saw in the agenda packet, you said two or three hours of research per case. I don't, I don't see you working through that backlog and doing that. It almost feels like you kind of have at some point to do a reset and say, if there was a complaint, we need you to make a new complaint. Maybe transitioning to a new system allows you to do that. But since there is no regulatory requirement to close those, at some point, I don't think we can look at something from 2008.
Yeah.
Mayor, if I could just speak to what would happen ideally when there's an impasse between the city's code enforcement and the property owner, shall we say? Ideally, we'd like the tools, by that time, the matter would have escalated up to the city attorney's office, and we would like the tools to be able to issue a notice of violation and an order to correct. That would be a civil matter, and in that notice, we would include the facts of why the violations are there, what codes are being violated, and something along the lines of, you know, please have this violation taken care of within a month, 30 days, 15 days, depending on the severity, as well as accruing civil penalties that would, that would get triggered if they failed to comply within that time. Now, this notice would be, if the property owners disagree with what's in the notice, would be appealable to the hearing examiner, who would conduct a hearing on whether the violation did or did not occur, and issue a decision. The hearing examiner's decision would then be appealable to Superior Court, where if it did get appealed, the city could get a judgment out of it and turn all the civil penalty fines into a court, a court order judgment, where the city could either lien the property or have other means of collecting that civil penalty. Before that even happens, as long as the civil penalties are, you know, if it's appealed and the hearing examiner sides with the city, those civil penalties can also be sent to collections to be collected that way, to be enforced that way.
So, that's in place right now? You have those tools?
We do not have those tools as clearly as I described it. I described it. These are the process changes, amendments to the code that we'd like to see, that we would be proposing from our office in order to be able to resolve and close more of these code enforcement actions, especially the severe ones.
Okay. So, one, as called out in the agenda bill, we went through sort of a similar process with regard to fire alarm misfires, I guess. I don't remember what we called them. So, basically, when the fire alarm goes off or the false alarms... Yeah, that's a better way of saying it. Thank you. And so, we went through a process of determining sort of a ramping or an escalation of fees, et cetera. And what I'm hearing come from staff, what I'm starting to intuit coming from councils, that there might be an interest in sort of a similar approach with regard to code enforcement, which is, you know, whether it's three strikes or whether it's, you know, some of the five strikes, I don't know, or what the escalation is. But that maybe we could go back and look at what some of the principles were behind that, that fire code, and even, I think, with some of the backflow testing, particularly with the waterfront properties, which is another example where we had to get a little bit tougher. So, let's look at some of the precedents from the last few years that are there. The other question sort of that I have, or perhaps I'm going to play amateur psychologist, is that sometimes it's very awkward that it's difficult for a neighbor to go ask another neighbor to, A, put your garbage cans away and/or pick up your, or to do whatever. And on one hand, you want to encourage people to go have those face-to-face conversations just because it's probably a little bit more human and a little bit more kind, certainly efficient for the city. But I was equally wondering if there aren't, for example, some of these common challenges that you see come in from a complaint perspective, where you could say, hey, you know what? Here's a dropdown, pre-formatted statement about how soon you have to have your garbage cans in, or, you know, how high your fence can be in the front yard, or you have to, you know, we had the issue with our residential code, you know, about keeping shrubs off the right-of-way or the sidewalk or something like that. So, maybe that's just another thought, is to give people both the encouragement to do it themselves, but equally some, you know, low-hanging challenges that they could then go talk to their fellow islanders about that could keep the city even out of the equation. But apart from that, what I wanted to say to councilors, so that we can get staff what it is they need, I'm hearing that we're all kind of in support of a code cleanup. I'm hearing that we're all kind of in support of, let's not us be the ones to actually figure out what degree of penalties. I think we all want to be consistent with our neighboring communities and best practices. I think we do have some historic examples through the backflow and the fire, false alarm, and definitely some new tools that make it a little bit more efficient and easier, not only, of course, for staff, but also for the community, be it, it was see it, click it, something it, you know, fix it. There we go. So, with that, definitely, I see Tom wants to comment, Bruce wants to comment, and then I would love to hear from the staff team about what other questions you need to have answered in the, you know, five, 10 minutes that we've left. So, Tom, then Bruce.
Thank you, Allison. Allison and I go way back on this topic, probably four years, so I'm very familiar with the process. I have a question and just three comments. My question is, and you can answer it after my comments, what is the process for feedback to support change, not just for the council, but also for the community? Because I think there are a lot of people out there that have been in a loop, and they might have ideas on process improvement. So, I know you're asking us for our feedback, and I'm going to give you most of mine offline, but I think we should let the community know how to maybe get some inputs to you. I, I'm focused kind of on the process perspective as well as the compliance tools. So, anything we can do to create aging reports and service-level agreements and performance tools to figure out what our case closure rates are, I think is something that should be looked at, as well as, I'm a firm believer in the system drives the behavior, and if there's no teeth in it, then we have to have some sort of action to a lack of action from an unwilling participant that's clearly out of compliance. And I guess, I had two questions, and the second one is, since it's consuming resources, three hours per case, and we have a high caseload, it's costing the city money. So, I don't want to mandate that the city has to cite people, but I want to look at it as a tool, and I just want to make sure that if we implement a system that has some penalties in it for a lack of adherence, you aren't required to do it for everybody and that you have some latitude, we have some latitude as a city to apply some logic to it, kind of what Debbie was saying and stuff.
Thanks. Bruce?
Could I respond to the first part of that question at least, which was, how can residents or citizens have feedback in this process? I think anyone can email me comments if they'd like to, and I think another important way is to come to the public hearing at the Planning Commission on June 20, I think, give feedback there.
I'll echo the, thanks for the, for the report. I think what you laid out in the agenda bill in terms of proposed directions all sounded very rational and supportive of that. I think having penalties that begin low and do escalate so that you have a hammer if you need it, as you find that folks are recalcitrant in making change, makes sense. I'm certainly not in favor of a heavy-handed approach. I mean, Julie, I think, laid out, you know, let's tread lightly on this, but let's give you some tools. And, yeah, Debbie pointed out, we did do fire alarm penalties here at the council, but I'd love to have staff develop something that seems rational to you and not have us debating the detail of that, because we can go around in circles, not very, not very usefully, doing that level of detail work on this. And so, if staff were to bring us something that you thought rational and fully packaged, I'd be in favor of that.
Super. So, now I think I'm going to actually turn it back to Allison, Julie, and team. Are there further questions still to be asked and direction provided by councilor you're feeling?
Well, maybe just to kind of summarize what I heard and make sure I'm on the right page. It seems like there's pretty broad support to provide more tools for staff, to look at kind of an escalating approach for the most serious violations, to look at technology solutions that could help us improve our internal and external processes. And I think Bruce said tread lightly. So, we want to use the hammer when we need to, but otherwise, still work with people and, you know, people that are willing and working voluntarily, let's keep being supportive and cooperative with that.
Okay. I think Celine's going to add.
I just want to make sure that we've captured, especially if we're going to look at technology, a way for people to... a way for people to find the status of their complaint. We need that, I don't know if you meant that with your feedback, internal, external processes, but people need to kind of self-service the status of the complaint.
I agree. I agree.
And have we looked into the public records request system, and see if that could support any of this? Because it does support ticketing.
Yeah, I think it would be easier to use our existing, we have mybuildingpermit.com that's linked into our tracking database. I think we can build out something within that system that can, like, we track all of our code compliance cases in that permit database, so every time they update something in there, it would automatically go onto the website. So I think that'll be the easiest way to get the functionality you want, we just need some time to get it going.
Benson?
Just one last comment for me. I want to echo what Councilmember Bassett said. I think it's important for, when you guys come back to us, that we have the full package, so that we're not into redrafting things or whatever else. I like the way that Assistant City Attorney Park described the process that he would like to see. It's incredibly logical, you know, part of me just cringes, thinking, I don't know why we didn't, why we don't have it already. And so, anyway, I think that approach that was described makes incredible sense, and so I would like to see that perhaps considered a part of the whole process.
Okay, I think we have Dave, and then Bruce.
Just wanted to make a clarifying comment about the technology. Like, the idea is not that we just give visibility to the people that made complaints, but to, you know, we're not printing head counts, so to dramatically reduce the amount of work that you all are spending on those lower-level things, and use the compliance officers that we have for the bigger stuff.
So we can automate some of the simple things.
Yeah, if we can just save those valuable resources and your all's time on the simple stuff.
Got it.
Okay, Bruce?
Just really quickly, I'm just going to say, I support what Councilmember Neese had suggested, which is that as we get through this, it might make good sense to have a reset on all the cases that are out there, and say, if that's still alive, you got to file it again, because it's been years, and I think that makes a lot of sense, maybe clean up.
So maybe some sort of expiration date?
Yeah.
Yeah, okay. Great, so going, 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 okay. I think, great, Julie, thank you so much, Allison, that was super helpful. I think we all learned a lot tonight. Hopefully, we've given you what you need?
Yeah.
Okay, and the planning commission as well. With that, council, I'm going to suggest we take a five-minute break, and then come back, and although I can't exactly see, let's just make it 7:05. We'll make it 7:05. All right, I think we're going to go ahead and get started. Good to see such a crowd. Okay, thanks everyone, council. So hello, and welcome back to the April 3, 2018 City Council Regular Meeting. The council has completed an executive session and study session on code compliance, and will now move on to special business. We do have two special items of business this evening, and the first is Agenda Bill 5411, Earth Day and Leap for Green Proclamation. So with that, I welcome Sustainability Manager Ross Freeman.
Thank you, Mayor Burland.
Thank me as much as you.
Test. Thank you, Mayor Burland. So tonight, we are here to celebrate Earth Day and Leap for Green Festival, and I'd like to invite up some of the recipients for this proclamation. Elizabeth Hardisty, one of our veteran green activists on the island, is going to be joining me to receive this. And then we have Evie Sharples, a junior at Mercer Island High School in sustainability issues, and a devoted environmentalist. And then if there's any members of Am I Ready for 100 who'd like to come up, feel free. We had a few last-minute changes on the roster here, so we have some substitutions that aren't in your agenda bill. Yeah, come on over. And if you want to stand over here. And then we have one more special guest on this occasion that we'd like to invite out to join us, to receive the proclamation as well.
The star audition.
Bravo. For those of you who don't know who this character is, this is Leap, our mascot, and to be honest, I don't know if Leap was there at the very beginning of Leap for Green. I imagine that's true. I'm looking to Bruce, perhaps. So 10 years ago is when our Leap for Green Festival began, and that was really intended to celebrate Earth Day by promoting environmental practices and activities on the island, and Leap has been with us ever since. So with that, I'd like to turn it back over to Mayor Burland to read the proclamation.
That's right. Well, we have the star of the show here, and I'm sure if Leap had a voice, Leap would be better suited to be reading this proclamation than I am. Anyway, whereas the first Earth Day was organized on April 22, 1970, to increase awareness of our planet's fragile ecosystems and educate people on responsible environmental stewardship, and whereas that same year Mercer Island voters approved 5 million in park acquisitions and improvements to preserve healthy habitats, and whereas in the 1980s, the city enacted development ordinances to protect the environment and preserve the wooded character of the island, and whereas the new millennium heralded a far greater understanding of the perils of global climate change and the urgency of local action, and whereas the city has pursued various energy efficiency and lighting upgrades at its major facilities, lowered its fuel usage, purchased electric vehicles, and installed EV charging stations, and whereas in January 2013, Mercer Island was honored by the U.S. Environmental Protection Agency as the National Green Power Community of the Year, and whereas in 2018, the city received Seoul Smart Gold Designation from the Department of Energy for meeting a stringent solar installation criteria and acknowledging the community's 116 solar arrays, and whereas in 2019, all of the electricity needs for the city operations will be met by clean wind power from a new wind farm in Western Washington, and whereas Mercer Island has become an increasingly active supporter and advocate for state and county-level collaborative greenhouse gas reduction efforts and legislation, and whereas Earth Day offers an opportunity to recommit to building a flourishing, sustainable community for all, I, therefore, Debbie Burland, Mayor of the City of Mercer Island, do hereby proclaim April 22, 2018, as Earth Day in the City of Mercer Island, and I encourage all residents and businesses to become responsible stewards of our island and our planet. Please learn more about joining us at the annual Leap for Green Sustainability Fair with our star on Saturday, April 14, from 10 to 2 p.m. at the Community and Events Center, approved this third day of April 2018. So I'd like to just give a big round of applause to our supporters. And would any of you like to say anything?
Thank you, Debbie, and council, and Ross, and Julie. It's inspiring to be reminded of all that our city has done so far, because here, we're working out the details of how to change our way of living to one that is based on planetary stewardship. Step by step, we're doing this, here in our own hometown, and that's pretty wonderful. I remember that first Earth Day in 1970, and many of us here do, some of us have just heard of it, it was so promising, but no one had any idea of the hard work that lay ahead of us. And now, a second generation and a third generation is taking up the initiative, leading us to go for 100% clean energy here on Mercer Island, and provide an example that other cities can follow. So this is a good dream coming true, that we're all creating together, for our children and our grandchildren, that they too may lead long and often joyful lives on this beautiful planet.
On behalf of the next generation, thank you, Mercer Island, for prioritizing sustainability as one of the city's main goals. I've grown up here, and as a junior in, at the high school, looking, trying to figure out what the future has in store for me, I look around, and I'm reassured by the positive actions that the city has taken in response to our changing climate, yet we still have a lot to do. Nevertheless, I am proud to call myself an islander. Thank you all for committing to making our community as sustainable as possible, so that I and every student after me can look forward to the future and continue to call this place home. Thank you.
I represent Mercer Island Ready for 100, along with Jane and Brian, and Elizabeth, and Eve, for that matter. We're a group of islanders who are extremely grateful for the leadership that all of you have shown in sustainability. It makes us really proud to say that we're from Mercer Island. But the clock is now running out. We feel that we're in the last few minutes of the fourth quarter of the ballgame, and we're a couple of touchdowns behind, and we have to make some pretty spectacular plays, and we have to make them pretty quickly. So for starters, how about if we're the first city, or one of the first cities in the state of Washington, to commit to 100% renewable energy? Or better yet, let's go along with all of the 13 cities in the K-4C, and make this same declaration, that we're all in for 100% renewable energy. And let's also write a climate action plan that actually meets the degree of the challenge that we face. that we face. And let's all do this together. We all look forward to working with you in the years to come. Thank you.
Great, thank you. We can get a photo with all of the assembled here, unless you have some additional comments?
She spoke for us.
Okay.
Leap is the star of this one.
That's what I think all mayor emerals get to do, should be to wear the Leap costume, as long as they've got eye holes in there.
Assistant city managers in there.
Which one?
All of them.
Thank you so much for coming, and thank you for all the work that you're doing. So with that, we have another item of special business this evening, which is AB 5408, and it is the Sexual Assault Awareness Month Proclamation. And for this, I'm going to turn it over to City Manager Julie Underwood.
Mayor, it is my pleasure to invite a Islander, a resident, Lawton Penn, if you'll come up and join me. She is Vice President of the King County Sexual Assault Resource Center. She is Vice President of the Board of Directors and also a Mercer Island resident. So Mayor, if you'll...
Thank you, and thank you for coming. Whereas Sexual Assault Awareness Month calls attention to the fact that sexual violence is widespread and impacts every person in this community in some way, whereas in Washington State, 45% of women and 22% of men report having experienced sexual violence in their lifetime, and whereas in King County, 6,657 adults and children received sexual assault services at accredited community sexual assault programs last year, and whereas nationally, 1 in 5 children under 18 are sexually abused, and in King County last year, 2,000 children and youth have been sexually abused, received services from the King County Sexual Assault Resource Center, and whereas in 2016, 18% of 10th graders in Washington reported that they had been made to engage in unwanted kissing or sexual contact, and whereas negative impacts of sexual violence trauma on women, men, children, and youth include fear, concern for safety, symptoms of post-traumatic stress disorder, injury, and missed work and school. And whereas working together to educate our community about sexual violence, supporting survivors when they come forward, speaking out against harmful attitudes and actions, and engaging in best-practice sexual violence prevention work helps end sexual violence. Now, therefore, I, Debbie Burtland, Mayor of the City of Mercer Island, do hereby proclaim April 2018 as Sexual Assault Awareness Month in the City of Mercer Island, and encourage all to join advocates in communities across King County in taking action to prevent sexual violence by standing with survivors. Together, we commit to a safer future for all children, young people, adults, and families in our community, approved this third day of April 2018. Thank you for coming.
So I am Lawton Penn, and I am a Mercer Island resident. As she said, a member of the Board of Directors of CASEARC, and I really can't thank you enough, City of Mercer Island, Mayor Burtland, the council members, for establishing Sexual Assault Awareness Month on Mercer Island. It's incredible to have your leadership in speaking out against sexual violence. When CASEARC first started 40 years ago or so, the theme was "Break the Silence, Come Out of the Shadows." Nobody was talking about it, it was so stigmatized. Then it was "Speak Up." Now it's "Be Loud." What we're hoping the next campaign will be is "Break the Cycle." Imagine a world without sexual violence at all. So this is such a huge step and so important to our residents and to our children. My husband and I have four daughters between us, three are teens in the Mercer Island school system, and then one young adult. Both my husband and I have had extended family members impacted by sexual violence. And I was so proud, coming here tonight to tell my daughters that Mercer Island was acknowledging Sexual Assault Awareness Month. So I really do thank you for standing with all survivors of sexual assault, for standing with CASEARC. Mayor Burtland said, "Boy, I just wish we didn't have to invite you to meetings like this, that we didn't need a CASEARC." But it is so reassuring for me as a parent to know it's there, ready to provide therapy, that's working on prevention services, court advocacy. The calls to the help line, the rape crisis line are up 50%, trending along with hashtag #metoo, which I don't think that means there's more sexual assault, it means people are more comfortable coming out, talking about it. So thank you very much. Mayor Burtland said, "What's the call to action?" And I guess the call to action would be go to the CASEARC website, it's k-c-s-a-r-c.org. Amazing resources. There's something called 100 Questions that was designed by teens for how to help parents talk to them about safe and healthy relationships. It's a really wonderful way to get started. You can start when your kids are fifth graders and have really good conversations that build over time. Amazing three-minute video to watch with your kids about "Talk to Me," it's a wonderful video of children. Just watch that with your kids for three minutes, see where it goes. So just talk, talk about it, raise awareness. So thank you very much.
So thank you for all of our visitors tonight for these proclamations. Next on our agenda, we do have the City Manager's Report, and for that, I welcome City Manager Julie Underwood.
Counsel, just want to follow up on last night's final, last, Community Advisory Group meeting. We had really everyone in attendance. I think we had one that had an emergency come up, but everyone there, we had a great audience, a lot of community members attended, and what resulted is a majority of those support a smaller levy and other revenues, as well as they want assurances from city staff that we will make a greater effort in operational effectiveness and cost control measures. In addition, I wanted to call your attention to the CAG recommendation and citizen survey will be presented to you and the community on May 15. The City Manager Recommendation and Public Hearing is scheduled for June 5, and the council review and discussion really will happen over a number of meetings, May 15, June 5, possibly June 9 at your mini-planning session, June 19, and then we have a tentative June 26 meeting scheduled as well. For our residents who are interested, you can find more information on mercergov.org/financialchallenges. Also, I meant to include, we held our second Telephone Town Hall, got a great response there, and you can find that information online as well, and of course, all of that will be presented to you on May 15 as well. I really have to extend my sincere gratitude on behalf of the entire leadership team to our Community Advisory Group. What a great group of residents, really great. And if you see these members out in our community, please extend your thanks to them. I really, I know personally, they had spent enormous amounts of time and energy on this process, so I am forever grateful for the work they put into this. Also exciting, we received $100,000 for the Aubrey Davis Park Master Plan process, and that funding comes from WashDot, and it's really, 41st delegation really brought this back home to us, and so our gratitude to our 41st delegation for helping us with the master plan. Very excited about this. This is before my time, but these things take time. We received our Notice of Completion of Chloroform Action Plan that came from the State's Department of Health, and I want to congratulate our Public Works Water Utility Team for reaching the significant milestone. As you know, took a long time to accomplish, but they did it. I know this was already mentioned during the proclamation, but we have our Spring Recycling Event coming up. It's this Saturday from 9:00 to 3:00 p.m. It'll be at the Mercer Island Boat Launch, and you can find more information. In fact, if you go online, you can find this great flyer that lists all the materials that we'll be accepting. You can also bring your documents for secure shredding. You can purchase rain barrels for $25 each, cash only, that's a bargain. And then, of course, our food pantry is in need of donations, so consider bringing some food items to donate. We have another restoration event happening at Mercerdale Hillside Park this Saturday from 9:00 a.m. to 3:00 p.m. Meet at the corner of 76th Avenue Southeast and Southeast 37th Place, and if you want more information, visit mountainsgreenway.org. And then finally, another reminder about our Leap for Green Sustainability Fair. I hope to see you there on April 14. And that's all I have, Mayor.
Great, thank you. With that, our next item of business is appearances, and this is an opportunity for anyone to speak to the City Council on any item. When it's your turn, please do speak audibly into the podium microphone, state your name and address for the record. Limit your comments to three minutes, and again, the detailed rules are at the back door. It's basically, please be civil and constructive. So with that, I welcome the public, if there's any public comments. Welcome.
Thank you. Meg Lipbert, 4052 94th Avenue Southeast. In preparation for this evening's meeting, I read through the Agenda Bill that is being discussed and may be passed this evening. The following elements are concerning. One, at the February 20, 2018 City Council meeting, staff proposed a list of seven goals, including, quote, "Goal Number Five: Improve the city's aging infrastructure and plan for future needs," end quote. This is one of the goals that was developed during the council's planning session in January. However, following the lengthy discussion by the council at the February meeting, the goals were revised and, quote, "Plans for future needs" was eliminated entirely. And instead of "improve the city's aging infrastructure," the goal is now to "maintain the infrastructure," and the pesky word "aging" has been eliminated. I'm wondering why the council is not facing the reality of citizens, why all of a sudden is the infrastructure not aging and in need of improvement, but instead can simply be maintained? We've been told that our infrastructure is aging and is in need of improvement, so why is the council again ducking the responsibility of addressing these needs as former councils have done? Citizens expect the council to be proactive in addressing the problems of our aging infrastructure, and I hope you will be. Two, with regard to the action steps proposed for discussion and adoption this evening, there are again items for concern. Action step number two under Goal Four states, quote, "Partner with the Mercer Island Center of the Arts, MICA, to identify alternative site locations," end quote. I'm wondering why public taxpayer funds and public staff time is being spent to support a private organization when there are so many imperative public needs that are still unmet, as for example, our aging infrastructure. Furthermore, if MICA is serious about identifying alternative site locations, why are they not rescinding the MOU, and why is the city not requiring that they rescind the MOU? Three, with regard to action step number one, update, number one, update, amend, and/or develop the following Mercer Island Codes and Policies 2019-D. One item is listed as, quote, "Amendments to permit alcohol for certain parks and recreation events and functions," end quote. When this was recently proposed, public opposition was strong and immediate. The public raised issues related to alcohol addiction, teen alcohol abuse, drunk driving, noise, disorderly conduct, litter, and pedestrian safety, among others. All this in addition to the fact that some suspect one reason for adding this action step would be to allow any establishment in the park to obtain a liquor license more readily. Okay, and as a public service, I'd like to conclude this statement by saying that the restoration event is not from 9 to 3, it's from 10 to 2. Thank you.
Next.
Good evening, Council. Paul Schumaker, 4546 Forest, and also here on behalf of the MICA team. So sort of three quick notes. First one is just to be here to publicly support Goal Number Four, which we'll talk about later on, support the comp plan process that's going through with the city right now, including looking at an alternative site, and also exploring a creative district. Second thing is just a quick update. We were here on February 6 to tell you some things that we are working on. So some real quick updates, our board will have its fourth, our sort of next-generation board will have its fourth board meeting in a couple weeks, so they're up and running. We continue to work really hard with the city and Julie and her team to create a tighter working relationship with the city and make sure we're in sync. Third, all of our energy on location is being spent on looking at and exploring new alternative sites. And last, and probably most relevantly, we're in the final stages of sort of finalizing a community visioning and input process. So in a couple weeks, we'll have a lot more communication about locations and sites and organizations, quantitative, qualitative ways over the next two to three months to have the community give us input about what they want for the arts on Mercer Island. So we will give you a lot more information about that, and we're also trying to make sure that we stay sort of in sync and in cadence with the city's public engagement process. So that's a bunch of updates. And last, but not least, a little bit of bad news, good news. If you wanted to see the Putnam County Spelling Bee by YTN last weekend, which is your last chance, if you missed that, I apologize. But First Thursday MYVOL is coming up this Thursday night, and the First Friday Art Walk done by three art galleries on the island will be this Friday as well. So thanks for your time.
Thank you. Is there anyone else for public comment? Okay, public comment is then closed. With that, we now move on to consent calendar. We have payables, payroll, AB 5405, the East Mercer Way water, block water system improvements, construction bid award. Is there a motion to approve the consent calendar as presented? All in favor? I opposed. Seeing non-consent, calendar passes. We now move on to regular business, and the first item of it is Agenda Bill 5404, Acquisition and Lease Purchase Financing, One Pierce Maxi Pump Fire Truck Ordinance, sorry about that one. And for that, welcome Finance Director Chip Quarter.
Good evening. It's time to buy a fire truck. And this is a Maxi Pumper, and as noted in your Agenda Bill, these things are expensive, about $733,000. It's a custom build, it's like buying a home, in a sense. And it's slightly under budget, about 1.6%. And I do lease purchase financing, nine years, which equals half of the useful life, 18 years, and got an excellent interest rate, 3.56%, which is quite a bit lower than the next highest, or next lowest bidder, I should say. And we're here just to seek council authorization for Julie and I to execute the documents related to the lease purchase financing. Any questions?
Counsel, any questions? Benson?
Chip, what's the status of the Maxi pump, the one that's being replaced? What happens to that?
Steve, you want to come up? It's 25 years old.
Good evening, Council. For the record, Steve Hyattman, your fire chief, we are replacing a 1993 seagrave, and so that will be auctioned off more than likely. It will be purchased by an agency. Typically, they're either in Eastern Washington or Montana and Idaho, so that they can easily get those, and then it'll go in and be put into service there as one of their backup pumpers.
So what happens to the sales proceeds?
Those go back into the apparatus sinking fund.
Okay.
I just want to mention that, so we assume 18-year useful life on our Maxi and mini pumpers, that's not usual, that's not... That's not usual, that's not typical. And what's more typical in other fire districts and fire departments is a much lower useful life, like 12 to 15 years. And so we try to push it on our end, just so you know.
Okay, I was asked a very serious question from some students, and that is, what color will the fire engine be?
It will be red.
Okay, we're not going back to green?
No, we are not.
Okay, good, thank you. Bruce?
Just curious, so we're pushing the lifespan on it, but there are trade-offs, of course, that come with that in terms of repair costs going up over time. You're doing some analysis as time goes by to make sure that we're not extending the life so long that we're ending up shooting ourselves?
Absolutely. We constantly keep an eye on that. And that's one of the reasons why this will start off at Station 91, that's our busiest station. It'll then move to Station 92 when we purchase the next one. Then it becomes our backup reserve. Our mechanics in Redmond, we contract with them for service. And so they constantly keep us updated on the costs and those records. And they're now implementing a new computerized system that will allow us to run more frequent reports rather than having to go back and look at the spreadsheets. Thank you.
And the standard, replacement standard's been in place for a while.
Council, any questions? Any further questions? If not, I'd love a motion.
I would move to suspend City Council Rules and Procedures 6.3, requiring a second reading of an ordinance.
It's been first and second. Any discussion? All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? All right.
I would move to adopt ordinance number 18-02, which authorizes the purchase and lease financing of one Enforcer Pumper Fire Truck.
It's been first and seconded. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? None? That was a super fast one.
Thank you.
Congratulations. I mean, maybe not need it, I guess is really the ironic part of this.
Somebody has time to see it, we'll come visit you if necessary.
Hopefully not, right?
Where's it going? Oh, so I can have my own?
So with that, we now move to regular bus, sorry, I have to progress myself here. Yep. So our next item of regular business is Agenda Bill 5410, adoption of the 2018-19 City Council Goals and Work Plan. City Manager Julie Underwood.
Yes, I am presenting a revised Goals and Work Plan, really coming off our discussion on February 20th. As you can see, we went from actually having seven goals. And I think most importantly, based on our discussion, you encouraged us to take, improve the city's aging infrastructure and plan for future needs, and combine that with maintain quality of life services, Goal Two. And so now that goal reads, reads really quickly here. Maintain quality of life and essential services and infrastructure by addressing the city's financial challenges. And of course, there's a statement underneath there. So we did combine that. We also, after that meeting, had the leadership team retreat. And you'll see a number of small tweaks that we have made to the document. Let's see. Oh, God, I didn't realize this was designed this way. I think the one important note in Goal One that I heard from the council during our February 20th discussion, in the narrative, I added, "The goal includes engaging with the community on how best to allocate the $10 million settlement agreement." So it was very clear in our conversation that you wanted to make sure that going forward, that $10 million includes a pretty robust community engagement process around how to allocate those funds. That was the one change that I made under Goal One. Wondering, should I go through each of the changes first and then go back?
Yeah, I would just say, you know, if you want to hit the high points.
Highlights of the changes. That, okay. So, so again, with Goal Two, we combined, combined our infrastructure and essential services together. And really there you see us addressing the financial challenges. None of that has really changed. We moved rate studies under this one. We moved, initially, we had a different goal statement. This is in the agenda bill around supporting the Mercer Island Chamber of Commerce. And so we modified this to read, "Support local businesses by working closely with the Mercer Island Chamber of Commerce to evaluate and address parking in the town center and to identify strategies designed to attract, retain, and sustain the business community." We also put under here the renovation of the Public Works Maintenance Center. And a new action item, really coming out of the CAG process, was making it very clear that we will implement organizational effectiveness and operational efficiencies. So that is a new item under that. And I think Goal Three really has stayed the same. If you go to Goal Four, preserve, promote, and enhance Mercer Island's focus on the arts. I know there was a action item regarding marketing, so remove that per your request. So minor changes there. On Goal Five, we did modify this in talking with the police chief and Jennifer Franklin, our emergency manager. They called out a need to improve the EOC facility. And so you may eventually see a small project there coming into the CIP for that. And then in addition, if you go to Number Eight, that's a new item, "Provide safety trainings for schools, businesses, and the community." Something else our police department is hearing from the community is really a desire, unfortunately, unfortunately, a desire to understand what to do, for example, in an active shooter situation. So we're getting requests for trainings such as that maybe in a business. It doesn't necessarily have to be at a school, but, and our own staff and that sort of thing. Something else that has come up, our own staff feel we need to improve safety as well in the building. So you may see some identified projects in the CIP around that as well. Okay, let's see. Really, this is more or less not very different than last time, except I did move some items that were under that initial infrastructure goal under this item. So you'll see, for example, under action item, "Create/Update Plans, Studies, Policies, and Handbooks," I moved there the water meter replacement plan, the general sewer plan, the sewer lake line feasibility study. Moved those items under Goal Six. So with that, I know that since your last discussion, there has been question about an additional goal regarding economic development and supporting our local business community. So you do have in your agenda bill a letter from the Mercer Island Chamber. And so that is something for your consideration as well. I do believe I put up here for possible discussion, Councilmember Wong's, yeah, thank you, Councilmember Wong's proposed Goal Number Seven. So that's up there for your consideration. It really is taking word for word what he had sent you in advance. So that goal, "Create policies that support an accessible and healthy business ecosystem on Mercer Island." The action items would be, "Support local businesses by working closely with the Chamber to evaluate and address parking in town center and to identify strategies designed to attract, retain, and sustain the business community. Develop a strategic planning process for promoting Mercer Island as a good place to do business. And review the permitting process for commercial development tenant improvements to ensure that best practices are used." I want to mention that the staff is in fact already working on some parking issues in town center, at least the low-hanging fruit, those things that we can implement pretty readily. For example, timed parking, so we have movement in front of the commercial areas, limited like two-hour parking, that sort of thing, looking at making those changes pretty easily. And then with the permitting process, one of the things that I will have our new Development Services Director work on towards the end of the year is an organizational assessment for that department. So in some ways, that'll be addressed as well. So wanted to make sure you're aware of that. So at this point, Mayor, if council has any questions about the changes, any discussion on revisions, I would ask and request that you actually move to adopt the Goals and Work Plan this evening.
Okay, great. Thank you, Julie. So council, in thinking about how we move through this most effectively, I think putting aside for a moment the proposed new Goal Seven, that we have any discussion, hopefully quick discussion about the original set of goals that we covered back, I was gonna say last month, but I believe it was back in February. So given that we did spend a fair amount of time on those at that point, is there anything about Goals One through Six, as in the Agenda Bill, perhaps apart from the Goal Two, Item Six, which does actually reference the parking project with the Chamber? Is there anything substantial that the council feels that it would like to bring up or discuss? Okay, I'm taking silence. Oh, sorry.
So under Goal Two, Action Item Six, the second part of that sentence says, "Identify strategies designed to attract, retain, and sustain the business community." Is that phrase on this new list, Goal Seven, action items?
I believe it is. I believe essentially what happened is Goal Two, Action Item Number Six, was moved to a proposed Goal Seven. Is that?
Right, so I don't see the language around, "Identify strategies to attract, retain, and sustain the business community."
Can we go to Goal Number Seven, please?
I see a planning process, I see a permitting process.
I think, I think one of the issues is that what we have here on the screen, what the city manager and I had beforehand, is not necessarily what Councilmember Wong has passed out.
Right. So what I'm suggesting right now is that we look at the goals that we've discussed back in February. And then with the exception of that particular chunk, which I think we're going to address in the context of Goal Seven, be it as posted or as provided by Councilmember Wong, are there any concerns with the remainder?
No, I would just say let's hold Goal Two, Number Six, and make sure we cover it in Number Seven as we draft that.
Okay, great. I think that's a super idea.
Let's make sure we don't lose that point about attracting, retaining, and sustaining the business community.
Okay. So I'm sensing that there's no concern, question about the remainder of the goals? Or Tom, did you want to address anything in Goals One through Six apart from this particular parking and chamber?
I just have a couple of things. One is Number 11 in Goal One. I'd really like to call out the Island Crestway access to I-90 as a separate action. I like the one that's in here for access to I-90, but I really personally believe that restoring our access to I-90 from Island Crestway for SOV vehicles should be a standalone. On Goal Number Three, Benson and I, while working on Number Seven that you're gonna see, there was a thought that we would like to suggest deepen the city's commitment to sustainability and livability. Just expand that goal a little bit. And then when I was going through an old survey relative to Number Goal Six, there was a question on the Mercer Island Citizen Survey about fireworks and whether or not there should be an ordinance or an amendment, so Number F. And I'm kind of, Bruce and I have been very sensitive to having staff do work that, I'm wondering, do we really want to spend time on fireworks ordinance amendments and having them draft stuff when we have a survey where the majority of the population didn't express an interest in it? And that's all I had.
Okay, so we have three, three different suggestions from Councilmember Acker. The first one, I would say then let's go and take a look at Goal Number One. And it was Point Number 11, where you wanted to see a standalone action item with regard to the SOV access to I-90. I believe we did discuss that back in February.
I'm just making a push for it.
Okay, yeah. Does any other council member want to support that effort on behalf of Councilmember Acker? Okay. Thanks for bringing that up. Yep, I think that's super. And thank you for reminding us. The next one was referenced to something I think you said that you and Benson were looking at. And that is, if I captured it correctly, Goal Number Three would be deepen the city's commitment to sustainability and livability. It would be great if you want to articulate that further, particularly in the context of how it lands relative to Goal Number Two.
The conversation, Benson, feel free to correct me if I misrepresent anything, but sustainability says, or speaks to a lot of people as it's only go green and environmental activities. Whereas this particular goal and the actions around it, especially if you look at the STAR framework, is much broader. It's talking about economic development and all of the different modules associated with it. So the thought process was if we added the words, "commitment to sustainability and livability," it would make a deeper connection with the community. And it wouldn't just be people automatically having a reaction to that statement.
Benson, did you want to add anything?
I think that's, I'm sorry, I think that captures the initial reaction that people had to the word sustainability. I think, you know, a lot of people have not had the pleasure of getting more information about STAR. So even though STAR is a fairly broad framework, I think there was just this desire to make sure that in addition to, as Councilmember Acker mentioned, people may have the initial reaction to the word sustainability, just to sort of narrow it to environmental issues, when in fact, in our context, we're thinking more broadly. So I think the word livability sort of was intended to capture that kind of a broad brush as far as making our community sustainable and livable.
I would say Dave and then Bruce.
I would support that. I like that sustainability might generate a conversation. I think that that's an important conversation for us to be having. I certainly can't, can't imagine anyone would be opposed to the idea of livability. But I think the fact that we're thinking that it makes sense for us to put a focus on sustainability, and sustainability in a broad sense, Tom's right. It's not the narrow sense that some of us, you know, would think of just carbon footprint. It's, it is more than that. But I, I tend to prefer to keep at least a bit of a tighter focus on it. Now, at the end of the day, it doesn't matter a lot, but that would be my preference.
Okay. Anyone else? Celine, any feedback? All right, so at this point, I think we're gonna just do a general thumbs up as to whether or not we would like to add the word livability to Goal Number Three. I mean, anybody object to the process? Okay.
Actually have a motion?
I don't know that we... Since you don't, what I took is it was in the spirit of as much as a formal amendment.
Yeah, since you don't have a main motion on the floor, you could do the thumbs up right now.
Okay. Okay, so thumbs up in favor? Opposed? Okay. All right, so the thumbs up was in favor of adding livability. The, the third point was with regard to goal number six, action step number one, and I believe point F, which is basically update, amend, and/or develop the following Mercer Island codes and policies, and it includes fireworks, ordinance, amendments. Julie, I know that we've had some conversations about what this meant to you and to staff. I know I've had conversations with different people in the community. I'm not sure there's a consistent understanding of what this means. It might be helpful if you could elaborate?
Yeah, I think the, really the goal here is to ban fireworks on Mercer Island. We're now, I think, probably one of the only incorporated cities in King County that still allows fireworks. I know last year, we did have a brush fire, our PD is seeing residents from off-island coming on the island, purchasing fireworks, and actually, actually dispensing of them in our rights away and in our parks, and so I think because the ordinance requires a one, you know, it takes one year before it's effective, the idea would be to address it this year and give, and I know we have a very active group who sells fireworks for their fundraiser, and we're very appreciative because usually that, that money does return back into the community. But I know our fire chief has mentioned you may be looking at this and mentioned that to them, so they're aware, this might be something you consider. So, you know, I think for me, this is something that I would, given the climate changes we're experiencing, some dry summers, I would just hate to myself experience a terrible land fire that destroys our beautiful community. So, obviously, those are some of the reasons why I'm very supportive of moving this forward, but I certainly respect the reasons behind not, not moving that forward.
Bruce?
I think the question here is, is not one of merits or not merits of banning fireworks, it's one of what's the process for having something appear here, and whether we're comfortable with, with what that process is. This appeared because city manager and, there's one council member felt passionately about it, and I have no...
And community members wrote.
And some community members as well. So, but obviously there have been past council votes taken that did not take that position. So, and it's been a contentious issue in the community. So, I, I think it, it sort of then begs the question of what's the process for, for this or anything else to, to land on the work plan, or the, the set of goals for the year. And I, I think that's probably the right place to have the conversation, rather than to sort of jump to, do we want to ban fireworks or not, which I think we're probably not prepared to have that conversation here tonight.
That, fair enough. I think the way I was envisioning the process would be for the staff to bring back a item for your consideration, talking about really the merits of that item and for you to decide. So, I would, the, whose workplace this would fall on is Chief Heitman, would be in the Fire Department, and they would be really managing this work plan item. And, and so it's really something that we would come back and study. That's really how I envision it, and then seeing whether or not the council, the community, if they support that or not, and obviously we'd be interested in working with our community partner, Kiwanis, on this. You know, I certainly, you know, want to respect that this impacts them, and so, you know, it would be a process, for sure. It would not be something that would happen overnight, but, but we would study it and examine it. So, this is really looking for your consent to do that, not necessarily ban it, but to study that issue and bring it back.
And Benson?
So maybe instead of describing it as a fireworks ordinance amendment, I mean, I like the way you just said it, just study whether there should be a ban on fireworks, I mean, as far as an action item, because I think having it described as fireworks ordinance amendment is probably something that's probably not going to happen in 2018, and so I just don't see it myself at this point. But I think the discussion needs to occur, and let's get a better idea of where the community is.
Wendy?
So, I would respond and say, why talk about it if we're not gonna do anything about it?
Okay. I would say, okay, Tom, and then Dave, and then maybe, and then we'll have Salim, and then I'll chime in.
I agree with everything council member Bassett said, and I'm very sensitive to Judy's speech, Judy, Julie's speech last night about resources once again. And the reason that I brought this question up was not whether or not I'm in favor or not in favor of fireworks, I just was curious how it got on here in the first place, because I was doing research on another issue, and I saw one of our community polls, and the majority of the population said we don't want to ban fireworks in the, in the citizen survey.
No, it was actually within margin of error, it was about 50/50 if I recall correctly. It was on the last survey, but I believe it was close to 50/50 in margin of error. Yeah.
Well, if you take the margin of error into consideration, probably you can bring it down, but the majority said no. If it's over 50%, that what I'm more worried about is, let's say it was 50.1%, I just am sensitive to the fact that why are we doing things when we have data that tells us that this isn't a conversation that the majority of the population wanted right now? Because I just, I don't want to spend resources on stuff when we don't have to, and I wasn't even prepared to have a conversation about I'm for fireworks or against them, it was just an observation on this, and in my head is kind of where council member Bassett's is.
Okay, I think we have Dave and then Salim? Salim?
You know, I just add the word future to what Benson suggested, because it's not gonna be an 18 effectiveness, so if we're gonna study it, it'd be a study on a future ban of fireworks.
Dave?
That's good enough. I mean, I was more echoing what Bruce said, which is, you know, the process of getting it on here, if it wasn't something that we, we all agreed that was part of the goals originally, and then it got added after the fact, that doesn't feel like continuity of the goal setting process, so that was my doubling down on...
Well, I'll make a comment, and it did come up as so many goals or suggestions did from the community, in terms of our planning session. There were definitely a couple voices that were fair, and let me just say, the public all knows how I feel about this, so there's no secrets there. But as far as the process is concerned, I do have a fair amount of confidence that the same process was used or the same logic was used here, because equally, you know, we as a council have not really discussed updating the purchasing and procurement policy, for example, and, and other things that are on here, the water meter replacement plan, we didn't discuss those as a council in any great detail. There's a certain amount of discretion that we did afford our city staff based on what they think should be done. So as far as the process is concerned, I'm good there. I would reiterate, at least to the best of my memory, that again, within the margin of error, there was, based on that citizen survey, which again was what, like 200 people, so I'm not sure it's super scientific, it's directional perhaps, that it was roughly split. I think what's important though is if we move forward, and I would suggest if there's council consensus, that we look at the study of the sale and discharge, because there's two distinct issues here that I think we need to call out. One is the sale of fireworks on Mercer Island, which is unique in the region, and as we've called out, has been a source of revenue for Kiwanis, which again has largely come back into the community. And then the second piece is discharge with fireworks, whether they were purchased on the island, whether or not they were purchased illegally, purchased illegally, there is at least a perception, and I believe a general sense from at least our public safety officers, that Mercer Island is a place where other people are coming to, to discharge fireworks. So I would call out, if we move forward, that we create that distinction in, in the assessment process. Bruce?
So, I don't like goring anybody's sacred ox, and I know this is a passionate topic for a number of people and for, for a number of citizens. And forgive me, I'm gonna give my little, my little speech before I, before I conclude it, but my little speech goes like this, and I've given it a number of times. My house sits at the south end of the island and has a view towards, I think, three different cities, they've got Renton, a bunch of Seattle, and over into Newcastle. And on the 4th of July evening, you can see fireworks going up almost continuously across all three of those cities, and those are all cities that don't allow fireworks. The, the end result of that observation for me is that banning fireworks doesn't succeed. It, it doesn't work, and that what ends up happening in those three cities is that everybody's going to the, not everybody, a lot of people are going to the reservation and buying fireworks, and then setting them off. And so what we can, I think realistically, talk about is whether we want to ban the sale of, of the safe and sane fireworks or not. I think that's something we clearly have control over. What we don't, I would argue, have control over is whether people set off fireworks, because the, the example from the region says it can't be controlled. If what people want to do is actually talk about banning the, the use of fireworks, I think that's a much different conversation in, I mean, when I, when I say that, I mean the actual, having a police force that would actually arrive at your door after you set off a firework and stop you from setting off the next firework. I think that there's, there's, it's unlikely that we would, we would head down that path, and certainly I wouldn't advocate it, but I think that's where you have to go if you want to get to the kind of outcome that's, that's desired here, which is no risk of fires, no risk of injuries, no risk of, of the other things that go along with fireworks. So, with those things as the backdrop to my thinking, I have been a consistent opponent of, of fireworks ban, and, and it also does tie to that there, you know, as Tom points out in the survey, was, it's, it's a mixed reaction in this community. So, it's not clear that there is a, is a groundswell of support, there certainly is passion on both sides, but it's not clear to me that there's a groundswell of support for, for a ban. Julie's comment that this was a item added with the intent of moving to a ban gave me a little bit of discomfort. Benson eased that a bit with, with his comment that, well, let's just have it be about looking at it. But Wendy and Tom both made the comment that, you know, why are we going to investigate it if, if we don't have the appetite for it? So with all of that as backdrop, I'm gonna suggest that we take a thumbs up, thumbs down on whether to strike this entirely from the work plan for this year.
Is there any other comment? All right.
Just, just to be clear, I think there's two, two motions, right? Then there's Benson's and then Bruce's, so if we're...
I'll get there. Do you have any more comments? Yeah. Benson, did you want to add anything?
Now, I just ask Bruce a question, so are you asking, are you asking that there be a ban, or, sorry, striking, the reference to fireworks...
Strike, strike item F entirely.
Okay, and then also strike or don't even consider doing a study?
Correct.
Okay. So, those questions should be asked separately, I guess, okay? And I guess the only response I have to the study and the response that, why do it if you aren't gonna do anything, is we don't know if we're not gonna do anything, okay? And so I am in favor of a study, because, yeah, the survey indicated that the community was fairly split, fairly evenly divided. Who knows where the community is, is now, and what the trend is? I don't know, and frankly, as the city manager pointed out, Mercer Island is an outlier on this very issue. So, I would like to, I, again, would be in favor of a study, so.
Okay. Yeah, we're gonna go Salim, and then we're gonna go Tom, and then Wendy.
So, question to you Julie, the, the study that we're about to do was gonna incorporate some of the year-over-year questions that we tend to ask?
In the citizen survey?
The survey?
Yeah.
I wasn't planning to include really a lot of these types of questions in the survey, but mainly focused on our services and priorities.
I had heard from Chip that we were gonna ask some of the same repeatable questions that we ask every year on the survey.
Mm-hmm. Right. This question has only shown up once.
Yeah, no, I'm just wondering if this question could be asked again?
You definitely could.
I mean, where?
You definitely could. Ask it.
Okay. And if we did ban fireworks, do you plan on having the police department enforce the ordinance?
Well, I mean, I've worked in communities where there is a ban on fireworks, I mean, typically, they, they still have fireworks go off, they're, for sure, but it's less, it is less. And, you know, because there are a lot of community members that are law-abiding, and they're gonna really respect that law if it's in place. But you're not gonna be able to police it greatly, because it's all over the place sometimes, right? And it would take quite a bit of effort to educate and inform the community about it. So, I think the other challenge is, you know, right now you allow safe and sane, but our PD has no idea which ones are safe and sane. It's hard to enforce anyways, what we currently have in place, so. And, and so basically, there is no real enforcement happening anyhow.
Okay, Wendy, or, no, Tom, then Wendy.
I think with Julie's answer, I'm gonna support Bruce's proposal, just because if we're not gonna enforce it, then, then why do it? But my original comment was, there's another option, and if we were worried about the revenue stream and the money coming back into the community, we could also look at continuing to sell, but ban the discharge of the fireworks, so that we got the revenue and a budget shortfall.
Okay, Wendy?
Oh my God, I'm just gonna say, what I know of Julie, she takes this list as a to-do list. Everything on this list, she's gonna try to check off by the end of the year, and I would remind us that this list is already long, we have sound transit, we have the STAR framework, we have the CAG and a levy, we have MICA, emergency prep, economic development, our town center. I don't think this community can sustain yet another big deal to talk about, and I think these fireworks would be too big of a deal with this list already. So as much as I want to have that conversation, I'd love to push it off to 2019, so maybe put it on our placeholder for the retreat next January. I really want to get to those higher priority items like sound transit, like the levy, like the STAR, and like this town center proposal that came forward in the last few weeks with our very active chamber.
Okay, so I guess I'm gonna take my maybe final turn, and that is, Bruce and I have been having this conversation for about six years, so I'll, I'll try to keep it short. We, we don't see eye to eye on this one. My point is, is this island is known for promoting positive norms. We propose, you know, we support positive norms with our, our kids, and our drinking doesn't mean we stop it, but it means we set what our expectations are for healthy behavior. The same thing with the conversation we just had with regard to code enforcement. We know we can't make everybody pull their garbage cans in and, you know, cut, and make sure that they stay, you know, within a certain distance from their, their neighbors, or, or prune their bushes, but it's about setting positive norms, it's also about prevention. It's not just about punitive, and you know, when you study criminal justice, that's one of the first things they talk about, is what is your objective? And for me, a lot of what the concern I've had is about promoting safe behavior, safe celebrations of our, our nation's birth. So with that, I don't see that it's inconsistent, I do think that you would see a reduction, and it would be like everything else, you assume that there's going to be a large group of law-abiding citizens who would respect it. With regard to Kiwanis, I can just reiterate, I have met with them not once, but twice, and offered my support... and offered my support in terms of generating additional fundraising efforts so that that loss of revenue was not felt or overly felt, recognizing that it does come back into the community. But just as there used to be some people, you know, who sold all sorts of stuff, you know, I can remember people who used to sell cigarettes door-to-door, if you can believe that. We don't do that anymore. So it's about changing norms and expectations. Given that it takes a year for any change to go in place, I don't think it's untoward for us to start this process later in 2018. I also would agree with the concerns that have been raised by a number of citizens about the fire hazard. I learned a lot about sparklers. I did not realize how hot they burn and that they are actually one of the most dangerous things that kids play with in the summer. So with that, I would definitely support Benson's direction insofar as studying, I wouldn't say the ban, but studying, you know, the future of discharge and sale of fireworks somewhere around. That's where I would come. So with that, I think Tom tried to nudge us along in terms of how we go about the question. So I would suggest that we start out with a thumbs up, thumbs down on striking F from the action steps. And if it is not struck, we will then go from there. Any debate about suggestions regarding process? Are you good with that? Okay, so thumbs up for those in favor of striking actions, well, goal six, action, step one, element F. All right, so it's struck. Mine's thumb down for the record. Okay. Nothing new there. It's been the same for the last six years, except for when Councilmember Grady was here. So with that, we move on then to...
They struck. They struck.
They struck it all together.
I think it's fair to ask the question.
Okay, so then we can, well, we can open a new question, and that is, would you like to add a new line? I wasn't clear enough.
Oh, I'm sorry. Yeah, I thought we were just striking the language as written, and so that's why...
It was more or less striking the whole concept of fireworks.
I'm supportive of the question being asked. Do you want to do a study? I mean, that was, I thought it was teed up.
Right.
Okay.
So, again, I would support a study on whether we should ban or ban the sale and discharge of fireworks.
Okay, so there's been a suggestion that we have a thumbs up, thumbs down on a study on banning the sale and discharge of fireworks. All in favor of that addition? Thumbs up? All right, one, two. You're voting on...
So it's whether or not we're going to spend resources to do a study this year or what Wendy proposed in 2019?
2018, right now. These are the 2018...
Okay, so I'm saying no to 2018.
Okay, so we have thumbs, we have one, two, three, and thumbs down. You were thumbs down, Dave. All right, so it's a four-three vote. It is struck.
Do we, sorry. Do we now, you know, taking a lead from Tom here, what about a study in 2019? Because a few are concerned about the allocation of resources. I'm just asking. I'm just asking.
I personally would love to, but I think it would sort of break with the principles of how you've done it. Believe me, I have high probability that my position will probably still be the same, and I'll look forward to working with you. Okay, so with that, where that then takes us is to number, the as-yet-to-be-defined potential number seven.
Can we adopt the goals, and then you can amend that motion?
You want to do it that way, as opposed to adopting an amended version? All right, so with the wise advice from our city clerk, would anybody like to make a motion?
I move to adopt the 2018-2019 City Council goals and work plan.
Hasn't been amended.
Well, as amended on items one through six.
Right, getting rid of that four.
And did, did number six include the deletion that Wendy was talking about, moving it to seven?
Yeah. We're just going to say yes, because we know what we're talking about.
Yes.
Okay. All right, so the city clerk, has there been a first and a second? Okay. All right, so there's been a motion and a second. Is there a discussion? Or is there a motion to amend? Discussion or motion to amend? Benson?
I'd like to move to amend the 2018-2019 City Council goals and work plan by adding the following goal seven. I think there was, there was a screen on it. Goal seven, create policies that support an accessible and healthy business ecosystem on Mercer Island. And then that's the heading, and then the one sentence below it would be, in order to make the city a more sustainable and livable community, it's essential that it has a thriving, it has thriving businesses that meet the needs of island residents. So that's, that's the motion to amend. There are some proposed action items, but I don't know if that should be...
Yep, freedom.
Should we do that? Okay, so this is all part of the motion? Okay.
I'm handing this over to Ally now.
Okay. So as Ally dictated, here are the action items. Okay. Again, some of them were already shown, but there's elaboration. Number one, support local businesses by working closely with the Mercer Island Chamber of Commerce to evaluate and address parking in the town center. Two, review the permitting process for commercial development, tenant improvements, to ensure that best practices are used. Three, develop a strategic planning process with the Mercer Island Chamber of Commerce and community to identify possible actions to improve the business environment, including, but not limited to, exploring the applicability of an economic gardening program and National Main Street program relative to Mercer Island. Four, hold regular sessions with Mercer Island Chamber of Commerce to discuss potential actions that generate opportunities for business growth and expansion. Five, conduct periodic business environment surveys to identify current conditions and future actions.
Okay, so Benson has made the motion to amend the goals and objectives. Is there a second?
I'll second.
So Tom seconds. Benson, do you want to speak to your motion?
Yeah, I'll speak briefly to it. I think the agenda bill accurately captures the genesis and the discussions that Councilmember Acker and I had with the members, some members of the Chamber of Commerce. Also, the Assistant City Manager, Kirsten Taylor, was at one of the meetings. And the takeaway, I mean, the basic takeaway was that the importance that the members of the business community felt, a need to have a goal, a standalone goal, that really highlighted their concerns and the need for the city to work with our business community in order to ensure that there is a thriving business community. Because frankly, for our community to be, as we like to call it, sustainable and livable, it needs a very strong business community component, and one that actually serves the community. So based upon those comments and concerns that were raised, I felt it was important to at least bring this motion for a full discussion by the city council.
Okay, I think Saleem had a clarifying question.
So Councilmember Wyker had mentioned capturing the second part of what was formerly goal two, bullet six, which was identify strategies designed to attract, retain, and sustain business community. Is that captured in your sub-goal three with the ideas of economic gardening and National Main Street?
I think, I think that's, that was the intent. I mean, I did break out that from action item number one, which simply focuses on parking as a standalone action item. I didn't want the action items to be so tightly worded. I think it's important to at least give some flexibility as the staff works with the chamber and other members of the community to try to, you know, develop a long-range plan, so...
Okay, and so the second part of that, to that point, can we, everywhere we mention the chamber, also mention something that allows us to have a dialogue with the business owners?
The broader business community?
Yeah, so it's, it's and or?
No, I, fair point. I apologize. I think that was also some comments that were in the meetings that we had with the chamber, that they certainly did not feel that it should be limited to the town center or retail businesses that need to be the broader business community. So I would be fine with that suggestion.
So with those, I would, I would support the motion.
Okay, Tom, did you want to speak to it?
Yeah, the only other thing I'd add is, you know, this has been sort of an ongoing thing for the last four or five years, I think. And I think this perspective will really give us something that we can sink our teeth into as a council, and Julie can work on with staff. But it's bigger than just the interests of the business community, because as a resident here, I want the business community to succeed. So we had a lot of conversations about livability and the value of having a healthy business environment in our town center, because if we don't have a healthy town center, we're going to end up driving to Bellevue or Seattle to do some of our essential services, and then it becomes a quality of life issue. So, yes, it was brought to us in partnership with the Chamber of Commerce, and I thank Lori Guyven and her team for working with us on it, but it also represents the interests, I think, of the community as well.
Thanks. Dave?
So just to clarify, are we just in questions right now?
I think it's discussion.
Free for all?
Yeah.
So question, then maybe a comment. Question for Benson and Tom is, the action items, did those come from the chamber, your interactions with the chamber? And if so, do you know that those are representative of the business members? Because I know that those can sometimes be two different things. That's the question, and then I have a comment after.
Okay, so to answer your question, best I can, the ones that were specifically raised at some length were issues about parking, which comes as no surprise, and also concerns regarding the permitting process at DSG. So those first two ones, those are not, the only thing that was, you know, verbatim, or at least the words from the members of the chamber, was basically the bold print that you see. The action items, I basically did not have an opportunity to talk with the members of the chamber. Basically, these are things that I sort of tried to capture and worked with Tom. And then I think most of you folks have seen another email that our city manager shared with other suggested action items that were developed or at least suggested. And I thought that they were also consistent with some of the comments that we all heard, at least Tom and I heard, at the chamber meeting. And so those are some of the things that, those are basically three, three, four, and five.
Okay. So I guess on the first thing, completely supportive of doing more to help our businesses grow and thrive and survive in some cases. What I want to make sure of is the action items that we place below that goal are completely in line with those business owners, which I think is distinct from the chamber, although they're, you know, I think sometimes we think of them as one and the same. Because I want to make sure that we don't kind of create action items that don't serve the goals that they're trying to get to. So I'm not sure how we do that by adopting this goal, if we are still uncertain about the action steps that serve that community. The second thing that I wanted to unpack a little bit is, you know, the city does invest in the well-being of our business community, and that's through this, I think, a significant contribution to the Chamber of Commerce. And what, what I think we should talk a little bit about is, you know, is that investment not getting the results that our, that our business owners would like? And do we need to work on that? Because what I don't want the public to walk away from is thinking that we somehow don't invest in our business community with dollars or effort. I think there's more we can do, but I think we are investing dollars, so want to make sure that there's alignment with that investment and the expectation of the business community. So that, I don't know how we have that discussion and make sure that we're sort of hitting the mark that the business owners have set up for us, but I think that's worthy of, you know, as long as we're making this a separate goal, baking that into it so that we don't get a year down the road and say, well, appreciative that you made it as a goal, but you didn't really do what we wanted, or we didn't really get out of it what we had hoped.
Bruce? At this point, we're going to give everybody a turn to comment.
So this is where I get to be the old guy on the council for a moment. So over the course of several years, the council brought up, discussed at length, considered, and had presentations on essentially exactly this topic at its annual planning session. And for instance, at one of those meetings, we had Ellen Miller-Wolff present to us. For those of you who don't know her, she is an island resident who is also, or at least at the time, I can't say whether she is or not now, the economic development staff person for the city of Kirkland. So it was wonderful to be able to have somebody who knows our community and knows exactly what that sort of job is, be able to talk to us about what's involved in that. We have presentations by our DSG department, because they're obviously actively involved in what the code language is and what the scope of their ability is. I believe we had somebody else in, expert in economic development, person's name, male, but I'm forgetting who it was, what year. We set up in at least one of those years, a subcommittee of council to begin working with the business community and trying to figure out how to go forward. Quite honestly, that, that didn't really go anywhere. But more importantly, I think, the takeaway that the council came to from each of those conversations was that the council and the city's ability to make substantial change to what the business environment is, is largely set at the time we set our codes. When we set what the town center codes are, we are setting the landscape, which is then populated by the businesses that can live within the code that we create. We set that, then it goes from there. If we imagine trying to actively recruit businesses to the community, we were largely told you could expect to put a significant amount of manpower to it and probably have a very limited outcome from that. It was, it was not recommended that we take that path. I give all that as background to where we are, and there's radio that we're hearing out there. I don't know if somebody can...
Over. We have a new system, so we're working out tweaks.
Okay. I can't think very clearly myself normally, and I'm trying to think over that, too. Yeah, exactly. The one that's playing for my teeth. Yeah. I would be shocked if anyone said they didn't want a accessible and healthy business ecosystem on Mercer Island. That's an obvious winning sort of concept. The place where it becomes more complicated is when you, when you try, as, you know, Dave pointed out, begin to unpackage the ideas of where you're going to actually put energy, resources, time to try and achieve something that is worth, worth trying to enter into. I was, I was disappointed, a little bit surprised to see some of the mail we got coming in from chamber and business community, which suggested to me that there is a disconnect between the council and the business community, a sense of frustration on their part. And we should take that seriously. We should address that. We should be having this conversation with them about where the frustrations are. But we should be doing it within the context of some knowledgeable input from folks like our DSG folks and others who can give clear information about what we can and can't realistically do and what it would take to do more, but at the same time, be listening very carefully to what their concerns are and trying to go from there. So I think there's a body of work there around a better, better connection between us and them such that there isn't a sense of frustration, which was expressed in some of the mail. But as I look at what's here in this proposal in terms of the action items, I get concerned, quite frankly, that there are a bunch of things here that feel like they would represent a significant amount of work and that, at the same time, I, based on this past knowledge or past information we've been given, feel might be destined for failure. And that what would be better to do now would be to enter with, let's call it baby steps... And that what would be better to do now would be to enter with, let's call it baby steps, a conversation and an ongoing conversation with the Chamber. If that door's not open to and the business owners, if that door doesn't seem to be open, let's make sure that it's open. But let's perhaps use this year as the opportunity to explore what the, what the issues are and then, as early as the planning, the mini-planning session, if people think we can get there, but certainly by the next planning session, be prepared to have more concrete steps that we want to take going forward. Now, with that said, the parking issue clearly is one where we do have control and it's been expressed as a need. We've already touched on it ourselves. So yeah, I would take that one as a concrete step to be taken. Now, I've just sort of, I've said a lot, beats the heck out of me how I, working with the city clerks, you know, trying to get us to be serious about motions, how I would offer that. So I'm going to just stop there right now, let this percolate a little bit, and then I'll try and figure out whether, or maybe somebody else can figure out whether there's a motion.
Okay. Wendy?
I'm going to wordsmith for a minute and saying point number four, I'd like to add the word retention after business growth, so we can retain the businesses that are here. And I'm going to expand on and review Bruce a little bit. I think we have new leadership at the Chamber. I think we have new leadership at the city. And I like having Goal Seven with these very specific steps because I think it's an opportunity to have a reset for what the town center looks like, I think, with sound transit and MICA and all the conversations about what's possible. I think it's important to keep this on Julie's radar and be sure to include all the other action items and goals that we have so that this can be front of mind. We have, we have a town center that's changing. We have light rail coming. We have development that's happened and we have development that's probably coming. So making sure that we don't leave our business community out of that discussion and whatever MICA 2.0 might look like or not, let's make sure that all of those systems and ideas are coming together in a way that makes sense for a holistic look at our town center and also not forget our business friends and neighbors down at the south end of the island, as well as folks who are working from home. We have a lot of businesses here. It's not just the storefronts. So I'd like Julie and our Chamber friends to be working together and have this kind of framework and priority to make sure that conversation is happening. I don't know what the outcomes will be. I don't know what the impacts are that we would be looking for, that Julie and Lori might come up with. Maybe we can get Ellen Miller-Wolff back in to have a conversation with these folks. I think there's, there's a lot of change and I think making sure we have folks who are in the weeds, on the ground floor, looking at all of this, coming together, have a plan and are working within the rules and regs that we have at the city to see what we can do in the most cost-effective way. So I'm in support of this proposal and all the points within it, and let's see where it goes.
Okay. Salim, did you want to? Okay, Dave?
Yeah.
Tom, did you want another?
I'm going to make a stab here at goal. Fantastic, but I wonder if we might, excuse me, sorry. I'm going to try and take what Wendy said and put it into some action items that might be more in alignment with the work that Tom and Benson have done, as well as what we're hearing from the business community, and then give us a chance to add more as we learn more over time. One would be, address the pending, sorry, I wrote that so fast I can't read it. Address the identified parking issues. I think we'd like to revisit the 60-40 split, right? We've never come back to that recently. Create action items going forward for this goal by August 1st. That gives us some time to engage with the Chamber and engage with the business community and add to this if needed. And the last one is reevaluate the investment in the Chamber and to see if there's a way to optimize that to get a greater impact for what the, what the business community is looking for, whether that's events or shop on the island, whatever the creative solution is, but just to take a look at that, because I don't know when the last time that was reevaluated. So I would propose those as action steps, which gives us some room to grow, but I don't want to start us from scratch.
So I'm going to read them back to make sure I've got them right, because this would, right now we have a motion on the table, so we'd have to kind of work our way through that and then come back to you. But the first one is, basically, I'm just going to overly simplify, but it's to identify and address parking, I think has been articulated elsewhere in the goals and objectives. You've suggested a new one, which is the 60-40 split, which is the professional services and retail element. I will point out, it's been addressed twice in the last six years because it's been in my term. Maybe we need to come back to that. Reevaluate the partnership with the Chamber. You had as number four. I'm putting that as number three because then the final point would be to, somehow we got to come up with a list of even more specific action items by August 1st. So did I capture?
Yes, ma'am.
That? Okay. Great. So, Tom, did you want to comment generally? I haven't commented generally, so I think I would just make a few statements. If you want to dive into the specifics, I might ask that you hold off just a second.
I'm not really sure how I would characterize, but I'm happy to let you go first.
Okay. Then I'll take it. Thank you. So I'm actually hearing probably 80 to 90% commonality from a lot of the statements that are up here, which is, first and foremost, we value the partnership, not only with the Chamber, but with the business community. I think we're excited to see the new energy that sits within the Chamber, certainly a higher level of interest that's coming from city leadership than what has historically come. At least for some of us, there's a recognition that there's been an attempt to make some starts in the past that have, I don't know if they've helped, they might have even fuddled the situation a little bit in terms of asking, leaving us wondering what our tools are. And that, what I've taken away is trying to figure out what the opportunity statement is. Some people might want to say what the problem statement is. I would rather look at it with a glass half-full, which is to say, what is the opportunity that we want to try to create for businesses on this island? Town center being probably a large subset of that. So what is it, what is the delta that we're actually trying to drive relative to where we are today? And within that delta, what actually sits in the hands of City Council and the staff? Because as Bruce has alluded to, rightly or wrongly, a lot of the content and the presentations we've had historically has been about addressing town center code. And that's been about requiring a degree of retail on the ground floor. It's been about parking. It's been about the professional services and retail split, which we took from 60-40 to 40-60, if you look at it, retail to professional services, with, with parking contingencies added there. I also am hearing, I think, throughout the conversation with regard to the goals, but also hear that we know that town center is going to change. We know whether it's light rail that's the primary driver or just the nature of growth and the dynamic environment we have here in Seattle. What is it that this community wants to see in the town center? And again, that probably goes just beyond, it goes beyond business. It goes into the type of services and the vibrancy and the walkability and many, many other factors. So with that said, I definitely support having a goal here. What I would like is, what I'm trying to figure out is what the opportunity statement is. I would love to have more time with the Chamber, with additional business owners, hopefully they too become Chamber members, property owners, to try to figure out, how big is this beast? What's the nature of this beast? So I think to Dave's point, that we don't come away at the end of the year either saying we've done it, we've checked off the list, or we haven't, but are we sure that we've actually addressed the opportunity that we wanted to address? So that's my long-winded way of saying, I think, I think directionally, we're all headed in the same place. What I'm sensing is, at least on the part of some council members, I would include myself, hope for greater specificity in the action items. I like Dave's. I might question the 60-40 just simply because I don't know if I can go through it a third time, but, you know, I'll get over it. So with that, Tom, did you want to?
Dave and Debbie, you both made a comment about the businesses and the Chamber's definitely partnering and driving this, but this is much bigger than the businesses. This is about the community as well. So I just don't want to lose sight of that fact. And yes, the town center is going to change, but my personal belief is that we're at a tipping point now and we get one shot to fix it. And if we don't fix...
Can you help me understand? What are we fixing?
Well, some of the trajectory from my, this is my own personal opinion. I won't, I won't bundle the town center, Chamber of Commerce into it, but one of the reasons why I felt so passionate about this at the January planning session is just looking at the retail types we used to have. Now, I don't like the asphalt parking lots, but it's all about options, right? And if we have greater options and we create a healthy business ecosystem, I can get some of my quality of life back. And I hear that consistently. I won't have to drive off-island. I mean, new seasons coming in has been a time saver for me in quite a few ways. But Bruce is right, the codes, I mean, that's how we make a difference. We talked about concurrency with the businesses and the impact of congestion and parking and stuff like that. So really, what I'm looking at is a way to partner with the business community. Kay, I believe her name is, she brought up some of the work that was done in a town center visioning group. The good news is that I haven't heard anybody say, disagree on what people want down there. It's just how do we get there? And what I worry about is if we don't make this a goal and we don't have those discrete action items around parking or whatever they may be, it's not going to get the attention that we needed to have to set our community and our businesses up for success. So one thing I'd like to throw out there is that we can wordsmith this all night and we're pretty good at that. Everybody up here is very articulate and smart and will figure out different ways to say things. But we have a planning session in June, so I'd just kind of like to throw it out there. If we get it roughly right tonight, can we look at it again in June and make sure that we nailed it? And that'll give you the time to feel comfortable with it and Bruce and anybody else that has questions.
That's great, thanks. Salim or Bruce, and then I'm going to look at Salim because he hasn't chimed in and...
Okay.
So Bruce?
I'm going to offer a motion. So I'm going to propose that we amend the current motion by striking items two through five and replace those with a new item two, which would read, "Staff to meet with Chamber and businesses with intent to bring proposed plan to mini-planning session."
It's an amendment to the motion.
That's correct. I'm...
The existing motion. Is there a second? Well, I'm going to second it then because I have new powers now that I understand. I'm going to use it for the sake of discussion.
Can you read it again?
Sure. So I'm keeping the goal, I'm keeping the preamble, I'm keeping the word action items, I'm keeping item one, but then I'm striking items two through five and replacing those with a new item two, which is simply, "Staff to meet with Chamber and businesses with intent to bring a proposed plan to mini-planning session."
May I ask if you wanted to perhaps include continuing with the work that DSG is doing regarding permitting?
Uh...
Because the two things that we heard quite consistently, what I've taken away from everybody's conversations, consistently, there's been recognition that we need to address some of these parking issues as well as the DSG permitting element.
Sure. Yeah, that's fine. That's fine. What I'm trying to do is keep from jumping into some things that haven't been vetted really, other than by two council members and the Chamber, but staff, to the best of my knowledge, hasn't, hasn't really had a chance to dive into that and try and figure out. And if I'm wrong, forgive me. But I'd like there to be a thoughtful process that goes into that and for us to then reevaluate at the, at the mini-planning session. Feels, it's a little bit tight for time, but it's, it's not bad. I mean, it gives them, what, April, May? It gives them two months, eight weeks to try and pull something together. Whereas if I look at things like explorer applicability of economic gardening, I haven't the foggiest idea what it is. And I feel, I feel discomforted trying to, trying to speak whether I'm for it or not. I have no idea.
I agree.
Okay. So that's, that's where I'm coming from with the proposal.
Okay. I'm, I'm not trying to force you to speak.
No, well, I supported the original motion, but I, you know, given the meandering path that this conversation has gone on and the proximity to the mini-planning session, now that we are at this late hour, I'll support the new motion.
Okay. So we have a motion, we have a motion to amend. Does anybody want to continue to discuss the amendment to the amendment?
Can we just recap where we are?
So where we are right now is we had a, we had a motion that for all five... Benson basically put up the sheet. We had a second. If I understand formally, I'm going to look to Ally for a little help. Procedurally, where we are right now is we have a motion to amend this goal, which is actually an amendment from Bruce, which lays out the text. It's essentially as Benson, as Benson's sheet would include through point one. Point two would then be the work regarding DSG permitting. Looking to Bruce to nod.
Yeah. So what you're, let's clarify that. So you were saying, keep item one, keep item two, and then item three would be what I had proposed? Is that, that's...
That's even a better way of putting it out. Yes. So strike items three through five.
Yeah, and I'm fine with that.
And then add item three would then be the staff to meet and, and, and. So the motion on the table is as written through actions item one and two, and there's a new action item three, which is staff to work with the Chamber and business community.
Yeah, I mean, I... Ally's probably got better language than I. "Staff to meet with Chamber and businesses with the intent to bring a proposed plan to the mini-planning session."
She's good.
Where?
Item three.
Number three.
It's as written. Ally's been doing a great job describing.
And were mine off because I didn't make a motion? Is that my failure to act?
Yes.
All right. So can I, okay, so let me first ask a clarifying question. Does everybody understand with what the amendment to the amendment is?
Point of clarification.
Sure.
Our mini-planning session, I thought, was to see where we were on our plans for the year, not to introduce something new. So I propose we try to land the language tonight so Julie can get her poster made and start her checklist of her to-do list.
Okay. So you're not, you're not in support of this motion?
I'm not in support of the mini-planning session. I'm in support of having a plan to work with the Chamber going forward. So to amend the amendment of the amendment, I would say for number three...
Hold on. You can only have two amendments to a motion. So we're maxed out. So I think what we need to do then is take any further comment on this amendment and/or vote. Does anybody want to comment on this amendment as presented? So I was going to ask Benson, you had, did you want to?
Yeah, I guess, I'm not sure why, you know, I guess I have problems with item number three. I'm not sure why. Item number three on the piece of paper, if you have struck out everything after including, why is that, how is that much different? So you have developed a, and actually, I agree with Councilmember Wyker. I don't like this idea of coming back and saying we're going to deal with it at the June planning session. The intent is to have a goal and action items that provide staff some sort of roadmap to deal and work with our business community. I don't know why they need to come back to us. But anyway, I would suggest that maybe number...
We have a motion on the...
I know. So, okay, so you're right, you're right. I would say then, cut to the chase, I am not in favor of that motion.
Counsel, can we vote on this amendment? All right. All in favor of Goal Seven as written, please say aye.
Aye.
You mean as amended?
As amended. This is the amendment to your, to your...
So we're voting on this particular...
We're voting on this one right now. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Number three.
Yes.
It's as written. It is as written.
Yeah.
All right. So we're voting on what is written up here. Full stop.
Okay.
All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed?
Nay.
All right. So the motion fails. Is there another motion? Benson, would you like...
We're back to the original motion.
We're back to the original motion. We can vote on the original motion, but since we now have the opportunity to amend yet again because we have a maximum of two amendments...
Okay.
Because I like Benson's comment.
Okay. So I'm going to suggest this then, okay? Because I, I understand, I don't know what possessed me other than, you know, I, so I'm proposing on number three, striking out... on number three, striking out the words "including" but not limited to da-da-da-da-da, okay? So basically keeping, developing a strategic planning process with the Mercer Allen Chamber of Commerce and business owners in the community to identify possible actions to improve the business environment. I think that gives you the planning process that you talked about, Bruce. I don't think the intent is to provide, to be that specific on these action items. I know from a list that I saw from some members of the Chamber, they have other items that they would like to raise with the staff and with, you know, and so I think they have some ideas. I don't think we need to necessarily put them down here because it's got to be part of an overall discussion. And the only other comment I would say is that if I gave the wrong impression, or if I gave the impression that members of the Chamber were not interested and not eager to have this ongoing dialogue with the city council and with staff, I apologize for that. There is no, I did not get, even though there was perhaps frustration, there is always a willingness to dialogue and to work together. So, so apologize for that slight digression. I'm okay with deleting four and five from my original motion, okay?
Mayor Bertin, we need a second on that.
I know. I was going to say, we're starting to get into discussion about the merits of it. Is there a second? There's a motion and a second. Does anybody want to discuss as?
Can we modify? I'm getting stuck in procedure.
We're all getting kind of stuck in procedure. I know. He wants to make an, do you want to make an amendment?
Yeah, but I'm not exactly sure how to go about it right this second.
Now you've got another amendment.
Okay, great.
Could you explain to us then, for the sake of simplicity?
Simplicity is I.
Hopefully, your amendment is minor and we can.
No, no, no.
No, no, no?
You heard the items that I think, that I tried to add as action items are, I think, representative of what, of some specifics of what some of the business owners are asking for. I think, you know, we reevaluated, like, the city is making an investment in the business community. I think we should evaluate if that's the most effective use of those dollars. That's one thing. I think that it's clear that they're asking for help, not only with DSG, but with the parking issues. That's something that we can make as an action step immediately, and I think that's important to. I think that revisiting the 60-40 split to see if that is, you know, in the words of one business owner, is that working for us or not? I don't think any of us, well, I can't say if it is or is not. The last thing that maybe wraps it up in a bit of a package is, is, this is not my idea, so I won't take credit for it, is the economic development plan. I don't believe, I asked Bruce, I don't believe we have one, and there's some indication that that's required as part of the GMA. So that would feel like a wrapper to wrap it all up, and whether it's required or not, but an economic development plan would contain all these items.
Okay, so what I'm hearing come from Dave is something that is substantially different than what is here. So with that, we have this particular amendment on the table. Does anybody else want to speak to this, or shall we just go to a vote on this?
Sorry, I just need to ask for clarification now. So, okay, so Ally, what you've got up there now is, so it did encompass deletion of four and five? Okay. That was what I needed, just to understand. And I guess the only comment I'll make is, if you're saving yourselves for getting to a 60-40 split conversation, I won't be in favor of that because, like Debbie, I lived through it, and we've, it's been, that's a big task, if you want to take it on. That is a big task. We can do it again, but I count on it taking a lot of time.
Okay, so Wendy.
I'm sorry, is 60-40 in this list?
No.
No, it's not. What I'm saying is if you're looking at this list and going, nah, I like Dave's idea better, I'm going there, I'm just causing you to not be immediately enamored.
I won't go there, I promise. So I like this list. I just want to expand on number three and go back to where we were at the start and talk about identifying strategies designed to attract, retain, and sustain the business community. That was the phrase that we had from our planning session. That was the phrase that was in point two, and I think that's the phrase that captures Dave's point around economic development, right?
Plan.
Plan. Economic development plan. Right, which is about attracting, retaining, and sustaining the businesses that we have. Right? So if we could expand number three, I think we can land.
Right now, we have a motion on, we have an amendment. So I'm going to, for this.
Well, point of clarification.
Hold on, no, let me finish, please. We are getting into a serious level of wordsmithing here. I would ask people to consider whether or not, for example, Wendy's comment is sufficiently encompassed in the goal as it currently stands, and to vote accordingly. So I would say let us clear this particular amendment, and then if people want to make another motion to amend, we go forward.
I still have a point of clarification. Prior to even getting into goal number seven, I asked a clarifying question when we moved to go through goals one to six, and the answer that I was given is yes, that that point in, that Wendy's referring to would carry over into the amendment for this vote on number seven. So I just, it's a process question more than anything else, but that was what we had decided in the very first passing of the six.
That was understood to be the direction. The amended motion does not have that exact wording.
Okay, so if we want to get to where Wendy is, we have to do another amendment, is what you're saying.
We have to vote on this one first.
Okay.
Yep. Okay, counsel, do you want to vote on the amendment, or the, on the amended motion as it is currently represented? Are you ready to vote, or is there any more comment?
Can you, I'm sorry, can you blow it up? I mean, can we?
Bigger font.
I want to make sure.
What is the white?
Yeah, bigger font, yeah.
Right, and it doesn't matter right now. We have to vote on this.
So this is what you have, Ally? I mean, okay.
Okay, so if we vote on this, we can add a.
Are people comfortable and ready to vote, or do you need another minute?
Ready to vote.
Okay. So we have a motion and a second on the table, as represented by goal seven currently drafted. All in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Aye.
All right, motion passes six, one, if I captured that correctly. And Ally, I think this is then.
Now, we can go back to the main motion.
This is now, this is the motion.
No way.
Yes, because what happened was we passed goals one through six, seven.
Yeah, we're back to the motion, the original one, which, the original amendment motion was to add number seven. That's what you're voting on now.
So now we're voting on whether or not to add this to the overall.
This as it looks.
As amended.
As now amended.
Okay, so I move to amend.
Go for it.
Here I go. Oh my gosh, it's exciting. So to add the additional action steps of reevaluate our investment in, our Chamber of Commerce investment and create an economic development plan. Sorry, sorry.
Reevaluate investment in Chamber?
In Chamber of Commerce and create an economic development plan. And I'll save you the 60-40 split.
Is there a second? Discussion?
Well, Dave, you get to go first. I'll discuss that.
So Dave leaned over to me and said, do we have an economic development plan? I said, I don't think so. Julie, Bo, Kirsten, can you help?
Other than any contribution we make to the Chamber of Commerce, are we spending any money anywhere on business or economic development, on any other resources?
Well, I mean, we support the farmer's market. You know, we support events in Town Center. That's meant to bring people to our Town Center, our business district, so there's indirect, I would say, support given in those ways. So one other item I was just thinking of is implementing the Wayfinding Project, right? That would support our business community as well. It would be one item that is already on the books. And then I know there's a potential for partnering, maybe, again, with the Chamber to seek a new grant with the Port of Seattle that could help maybe fund an economic development plan, for example. So I think, you know, there's definitely some low-hanging fruit items we can do here. But I think an economic development plan is what you're getting at, or it's looking like, you know, to me, kind of, goal five and three are a bit the same, though distinguishing it clearly from the fact that you're really, I would be coming back with a process of how to develop that, is how I read that. Is that correct?
A process versus a plan itself.
Definitely, yeah. Versus, and so three is process, five is the actual concrete plan.
So my question to you would be, would you want to modify number four to encompass any spending, any economic?
Sure.
Okay.
If that makes you like me better.
It does.
Okay, so we have a first and a second for the motion as currently represented, action steps one through five. Is there further discussion? I see Bruce, yes.
Yeah, well, I'm just going to say that I won't support this. I think five does take us a step farther than three, and I'm, without knowing what an economic development plan looks like, or how hard one is to build, or what we would anticipate being in it, I'd much rather start with a conversation with the Chamber and the business community to figure out where we ought to go rather than define what it is. That's speaking to number five. Speaking to number four, I don't think it's what you mean, but it appears to say, hmm, maybe we're spending too much on the Chamber of Commerce and we ought to not. And that feels like sort of exactly 180 degrees out from where the conversation is tonight. So that one, I get a little bit the wrong sense from as well. So with that, I'll vote against the motion of adding four and five.
Is there any other comment? Tom?
I'm not going to vote in favor of this one, mostly, Dave, just because I think the star framework, if we adopt that, get into the economic development component. So, and also, I agree with Bruce. I'm not sure I really understand what you're trying to say in number four.
Any other comment? Any other questions? All right, counsel, let's vote on the motion as currently represented, action items one through five. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Nay.
So motion fails. We are back to the motion, goal seven, which would be action items, I believe, one through Counsel, is there further discussion, or would you like to vote on the motion? Are you ready to vote on the motion as currently presented? I'm hearing you're ready to vote then. All right. All in favor of amending the goals and objectives to include goal seven as represented signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. We have a goal number seven. Yay. Okay. We're not done? All right, Ally's going to tell us what we have to do next then, because I.
Now you need to adopt the main motion as amended, to adopt all of the goal.
Could I interject really quickly here? Because I know Councilmember Whacker, uh, Whacker, Wyker. It's late. I've had two long nights. Oh my gosh, my apologies. Oh my God.
Is she talking to you or talking to me? Okay.
We're now a team.
Wendy, oh my God. Sorry. Instead of item three reading at the very end to improve the business environment, could you agree to change that instead of improve, replace to attract, retain, and sustain the business community?
Counsel, can we agree that that's a clarifying statement?
Just taking my original piece and.
I thought that's what the word improve meant, so, yeah.
Okay. I'm sensing from counsel, we're comfortable taking that as a clarifying amendment versus a need for a full amendment. Ally, if I'm breaking the rules, please let me know.
We'll let this one slide.
Okay, thank you. All right, good. All right, so we are now looking for a motion regarding adopting the 2018-19 City Council Goals and Work Plan.
Second.
Well, that's right, we do already have a motion. All right. Any further discussion? No. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes seven, zero. We have our goals and objectives. And welcome to the sausage-making.
The audience just did a wave.
Okay. So with that, we are now moving on to other businesses. We have, do we have any upcoming council member absences? No. Okay, with that, then we'll move on to the planning schedule. Julie?
Counsel, if you don't mind, I'd like to change April 17th study session, six to seven, to executive session, as well as May 1st as well. So instead of a study session, executive session for those two evenings.
Is the May 1st five to six, or would the executive session be six to seven?
Six to seven.
Okay.
Yeah. At tentative, that may.
Tentative. Yeah. So it was April 17th and May 1st, the study sessions would be replaced with an executive session from six to seven. Anything else, counsel? I would just recognize that we are going into a pretty intense work period between CAG and a variety of other activities coming up this spring. I don't see any council member absences noted, other than Councilmember Wyker for June 26. Tom?
I have nothing confirmed that there's a chance on this June meeting.
Okay. Which June meeting?
The one at the end of the month.
June 26? Okay. So we would be missing Councilmember Wyker and Councilmember Acker. All right, board appointments. There are no board appointments, however, it is season for taking applications. Quick reminder to our community that there are openings, vacancies. Please take a look, and we'll look forward to hearing from you, Lori. Which one it is that you would like to participate in? With that?
Yeah, you can do it right now.
We're all here. Okay, so with that, then, council member reports. We'll start with Wendy. Benson?
None.
Salim?
None.
Bruce?
I'm scrambling to get to it. Some of us are going to the, what is it, Go Green Conference tomorrow, I think. I will be there. I hope I'll see some of the rest of you. We will not have a quorum, but recommend that to others as well. I received, and I suspect some of the others of you, received letters from high school students who are doing their civics class duty in, at the high school, and it was always a pleasure for me as mayor to be able to meet with those students towards the end of their semester and hear what they were, hear what they were passionate about. And I hope our current mayor is having the same opportunity to do that, so, yes. And I have several letters about the Growth Management Act that I've enjoyed, I've enjoyed reading. I think, oh, there is a Sound Cities Association dinner tomorrow night. I will be there. I would encourage others to join me if you would like. It will, the speaker is.
Marilyn.
Marilyn Strickland, our new Seattle Chamber of Commerce head. So try and make nice with her after previous experiences. And I think that's it. Thank you.
Dave? All right, I can't think of anything other than Bruce. I'll be at the dinner as well tomorrow night. With that, 9:15. With that, 9:15, we are adjourned.